I just wanna make sure. Looking for the. My.
I didn't really see. Where do you go? I don't know. Say, yeah. For racks and I, you guys keep working on it. We did a little. We want to do it with that Italian accent. Nah, nah, that takes work.
I thought spelling it like it was in.
That's a good thing you end a little end of.
Does if I were to prepare for this meeting? No, I just wanted to start.
We're ready.
We go, Virginia.
No.
I don't know. I'm figuring out how to shut it off.
Yes, you want to plug it. Cut the cord.
Eventually we shut it off, getting it going with both TVs, people live, you know.
So it's all good. Cheap, cheap, they can make parts, it says press and press in. Press everything.
That would be a good idea. All right. I always get something one on one.
And if it does want to call. This is step one, step two. So I've got several tools called somebody.
Yes.
Excellent. Thanks.
I did. So it's asking me questions.
It would.
You know, I don't want.
We talked a long time. Just stays here, stays, stays here. Yeah, but I don't have any useless. Just so you.
No, we're just. I say, hold on.
Five, three, six, eight, five.
No, twenty-six, I don't think it matters.
Seven.
Well, why he's gonna like that?
Your last slide.
It's also, maybe that's the wrong date.
Pretty ugly web. Bye. I see that.
We changed that date for the. Clicking on this. What? There's no meeting. Kristen, so you. She's been sitting there. I'm in here.
I have a good.
Hello. This is probably the meeting. This is because we change, had to change it last time because it wasn't set up last. Why? So. Kristen set it up, changed the date, so let's just have Chris change the thing. You wouldn't change the date? Yeah. Well, should it? Go ahead. Yes, ma'am. Well, that's not mine, like I needed to reshow you that quick on time. I have this book because. The one on the landing board, so the one on the. Oh, that one. So why it's not, we can start. Every four, that's the other one. One for every second.
Yeah. It didn't have a good way.
Cause it just definitely hit the line.
Yeah.
Then I'm here, yeah, I see them. Yeah. Cool, so that's now. And then.
Some of the ones.
Most we want our AI.
You have the ones though.
I don't know. This is all the same thing. We don't care about. No, this has to open up and then the icon is on the top and that's where you get data. Yes, okay. So that's why. This is never. Oh, oh.
Oh, I thought I said.
Oh, wait, hold on.
First. We have concerns, I just.
Oh, you know what? Sorry. Yeah, which one? Has that been opened the whole time? Apparently. So it was open, that's why you can't start moving that started. No, I, I hit start and that's when I popped up, but it. It did it in the background, so it wouldn't get unhated. That is good experience, gentlemen.
All best.
I don't need a transcript. Oh, now that saves the actions and creates another bio, that's. Down here. Oh, there we go. See, the star before was up at the top. This time it's down at the door. And there we go. And then. It's on. Okay, cool. Yeah.
It's a report.
So she can let people. It says it's reporting right here. It should let everybody. It was, it lets them in. All right, and you're blinking on the AI. Okay, and it's reporting. Okay, let's ask Susan if she can hear us. Um, Susan, can you hear us?
Yeah. Are people?
Susan, Sharon, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, you kind of can.
Bye. Thanks, sweetie.
You're welcome.
My children are.
All right. You know what's up, Carol?
Let's hope so.
That's it. It's following me into order. First order of business is consideration of the meeting, February twenty-sixth. I have a couple of things. For that.
Okay.
Um. Line ten. That's a call over by the chairman, the plan is where Jim was not there, so I was there. So I call it, so it's a good save by the.
All right.
Line on page two. On thirteen. The board member required. And that, that board member was me, I inquired about the winter conditions. As well as the fire department turn around, which would be affected. Um, on page three. Line nineteen. We can just say that after an extensive discussion. Cross off with submitting petition back and forth. Just say extensive discussion. Planning board request the following.
Okay.
Um. Let's see, eleven on the same page, the language process document. As a copy of the current land use permanent process document that TRT uses. You can add it. That of your team uses as the document we're looking for. Uh, downwards, it says planning board review and agreement.
Yeah.
Uh, number two. Or it says completeness review. Uh, the application is reviewed for completeness by staff and engineer. You're right, like include by staff and engineer, cause that's, that's just. Doing that, and I think we need to do that on number four. As well. And number five as well. And then on page five. Um, top of the page, which is like your following with the high reports of Kingas.
Okay.
Uh, to hide rewards of Kingas, I would like to change that into as the town's second engineer, I would say one of two engineers. That was all I have. Anyone else say?
Um, on the front page, under the people who were present. Timmy May Miller. She is a resident. And she's not rebutted anything that was discussed at that meeting for this project. Under guests in person. Third one down last. No, I still, she has, so that's, she has changed her, I guess. On her. Tax bills. Oh, okay. Well, she's definitely a resident. If you left, she was there yesterday working at the vault.
Yeah.
He was.
Anything else?
Nope, that was it.
Anyone else have any other changes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Okay. All set, good. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Any opinions? Oh, all done.
Jay's not on tonight, Jay, I, OJ made the motion. But my, my performance, oh, sorry.
Okay, election. Of planning board officers. Chair, the vice chair, and planning board representative, captain of the plan. Go ahead. For nobody, all voting. Steve nominated me.
Was which thing?
Second. So, secondly, all the favorite thing back then, I. Any opposed? Opinions? Oh. Vice chair. I'm making motion of Mike. I R T. I R T. There you go. Be the vice chair.
I'll second that.
Motion on second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, any opinions? Mike, you're the. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm gonna change your name to Smith. Steve, just stay. Um, vice board representative to the capital improvements committee. I'm representing. Are you? I'm that would nominate you on, huh? All right, Mike said. I'm naming the second. I'll say. All right, motion on second, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Here, I'll let those keep it. All right, so I'll move on with the. Bill business, the special business property owners of the following businesses. Those site plan review, playing board. Um, so Mark here in here for. The Alpine Pizza Restaurant, Saltfish Slit Bar. Bluebird, Martini Bar, drop, their South Peak, and the very food pop. Uh, we invited you in here. Uh, so you could explain your, uh, the intentions of all these places. The plan board met and we were, wanted to talk to you about. These, these businesses, we think, we probably start one at a time. Um, the Alpine Pizza Place. Is a. A new business that's on Main Street. We didn't, we didn't, uh, we received anything as far as, uh, site plan review for that. And it gives a little.
Yeah, so. Thanks for having me, I think, um, I guess a few things, cause we, we want to try to find a format in which we can kind of. Maybe come to the planning board, maybe we do quarterly or. You know, every month or two to just talk about all the businesses that we're working on or working with or tenants, because. Um, it's kind of good to keep everybody up to date, um, we're trying to make sure everything that we're doing is. In with the bylaws and what is something that needs planning more, like we have two bigger projects, some things to present to you guys tonight, which is the. Inside South Peaks of development that we're getting ready for, so we want to do preliminary reviews. Um, I'm very familiar with the planning board, as you guys are aware, so it's, uh, we're happy to. Come here and talk through things, so that way we can kind of get ahead of what we want to look at, so it's not in the rearers as much as it's ahead of us. Um, as far as Alpine Pizza, so that's a. Um, uh, that's part of that's owned and operated by the Alpine and whale's tail team. Um, so their staff is always working in Lincoln, their, their kitchen staff and whatnot was more seasonal, as well as the guides and people that are working there, keep them. Kind of busy, we found that it was the best use to try to find something that, that would be similar to what we're doing in Wales there, where you have some. You know, crossover, um, between staff, so. That's how we chose that location for Alpine Pizza, um, so it's really straightforward. Um, you know, pizza here. Place to hang out, uh, we're. You're not looking to, uh. You know. Not looking to. Really add much more to there, that concept there.
I think the concern, Mark, is that the, or the question, so the concern, the questions are that. It could, it's whether or not it is a change of what it was. And whether it has enough parking. Um, there for the seats, so, and whether we need to commit to site plan review, so if we take a look at what. What it was and what it is, and, you know, the hours of operation, I know. Uh, we had something in our minutes. Um, from occurring to the town manager, it said, uh. She had told the pizza place owners, if the business sprays from it, servicing the attractions, visitors, and starts attracting a product clientele can no longer be. Allowed to operate under the current permit without come to the board for site plan review, so if it's open. Other than, other than the hours that the Alpine is open, then I would need to come in for site planning review. And that, I think that's the question.
Yeah, so again, then under that, that wasn't what my expectations were, what was portrayed, we always intended on, like. When I say different hours, it's like, it's, we don't do things after dusk, certain times of year we change, right, like Alpine Adventures is a constantly changing schedule based off weather, time, et cetera. So what, I was under the impression of the bylaws, that it, under the existing special permit or planning board approval. In amusement, you know, attraction. In attraction.
Attraction, whatever.
Right, so tourist attraction. Um, if it was not the primary business focus, right, so the primary business to me was, you know, what is gross revenue, what is the amount of sales, what is the amount of staff? You know, what is the primary use of that property, and that primary use is Alpine Ventures, just to. Not even, like, dollar for dollar. I couldn't possibly make enough pizzas to even come close to paying just my mortgage on Alpine Adventures. Uh, so, you know, to me it was an easy conversation, we talked about it with, you know, this is why we're doing things, this is the plan. We didn't open for a while, it took us a while to get that, we all approved, so there was no worries, as far as, like, there was nothing about it that I looked at that was a special. You know, an exception I was looking for, we have enough parking, uh, the parking out back, there's actually considerable amount of parking. Um. In the back of that site as well, um, and the amount of square footage of commercial space is not changed, right, like. It was in, within the existing building, um, so all the things that we looked at on that. You know, we're under. We're under the guidelines to our opinion that that is what it was, and that's why we opened it.
But it. You need to come, come to the planning board if it's going to be something other than servicing. The Alpine Adventures during those hours, so the Alpine Adventures is open till, what, four o'clock?
Yes, I guess, I guess.
Normally, and then, and then you open up Alpine Pizza's open till nine o'clock.
Yes, what I, what I, what I would say is I'm happy to talk to the planning board about all the things I have going on, what I'm trying to avoid is the. Like. That hour, the set hours weren't portrayed to us, right, like, I clearly never was intending on, hey, you have to match the hours of this, right, like. If that was the case, I wouldn't say, yes, let's open pizza and beer, and we're gonna close at four, or we're gonna close.
If you look on your website, close. Close to businesses. You'll see that they had the hours of the business on it.
I'm not suggesting the hours match. Like, what I'm, what I'm saying here is the hours of operation and it being a tourist attraction and having different hours and different things. Didn't appear to, that, I thought it was underneath that guideline, right, like, we talked about hours right from the get-go, so. When we were applying for permits, we knew we were, we never knew, we never portrayed that we were closing at four, we're gonna be the same hours, it was always, is a. Ancillary business too, is it under, like. My research on this, and this is what we do with all permits, if we can talk about, I got a few to run. Is. Are we changing use, right, like, is it, do we have an existing planning board approval, do we have an existing approval to do things, and then. When you look at it, based off of what we see, we decide to come to planning board or not, right? I have no problem coming to the planning board, right, that's why I suggested when I first sat here is the coming every two months or every month, saying, hey, we're working on this. You know, is there something, questions or. Concerns, or do we want to open up a public hearing on it, or is it something that, no, this is. This is. I'm correct in my synopsis, or the town and I both agree, when I say the town, other members of the town that I'm applying for permits for and whatnot.
Well, I, I don't know if you're familiar with it. The planning board has what we call conceptual review.
Yeah.
So whenever you have any questions or concerns or. You, you know, just, you may ask, look, I'm gonna open up, open up this pizza place with business over here, what do I need to do? And that's where, to me, that's where you should, you should come to the board and say. This is what I think I'm gonna do, just like you're doing to next some of your other stuff, that, that's further down the agenda, but, you know, you come and say. This is what we want to do. Are there any faults? What, what should we be thinking about? And to me, the pizza, the pizza place did that. And they came to the town. And the town. According to Karina and, and, and the minutes. You know, said that if it was gonna be different operational hours, could be standing alone, that, that it needed coming in for site plan review. So, all I'm saying is, is look. When you come in. So that area changed, it, it was never, it was never a food service business, so now you have seats, so according to the town's. Regulations, you have to have so many parking spaces, or so many seats, you know, and then you, you have your business over there, so if your business is open, same time. The amenity or the pizza place is open, and you gotta look at how many parking spaces you have over there, so that's one of the things we look at. You know, and, and parking is getting to be a real big issue in town, so, especially for businesses, so.
Yeah, I, I have no problem coming to the planning board, I would point out, if we, we were never the hour. Like hour per hour, if you will. If we ever were told five months ago, or a concept day, six months ago, and the months of us building this out and permitting it, you know. Getting things signed off, liquor license, whatnot. If I knew the hours were different and the planning board wanted to hear it, I wouldn't have been coming. I mean, it's.
Well, what can we do to fix that?
So I think fixing things moving forward, I think one of the things that we would have used, we have so much going on in town. And we see a need for more businesses, not just more residential development, we see a need for more employee housing. There's numerous things where it's us helping small businesses get set up. If we come in and do conceptual review, where we talk about everything we have going on, and have an open communication. Of what's happening and why, hey, this is the zoning that's currently here, this is what's going in here, this is what this things are. That way, if there's any questions, we can address it, and then the planning board, as well as whether it's Carol or. Whoever in the town we're specifically working with, we're all on the same page, we don't, we're not looking to, like, as a development and big picture, we're in front of you for all these big projects, right? I'm not. I'm here to talk about those big projects, I'm not thinking about, like. The pizzas. Right, so we're clearly doing everything, as we've shown you through several years, just trying to communicate, go in, meet, we walk through the doors of the town hall to. Get all these things up in, in the works, but I think that we should really start with a standing. Yeah, or meeting that everything we have in concept, so whether, whether it's the tennis courts we're exposing over on the Rapids property, whether it's one thing after another that. We're saying, okay, they're existing, we're just cutting this, or we're cutting this land just for the sake of opening up more space for material, whatever's going on. If we can give you guys some updates. That way we can have conversations of, hey, this, do you want this, we want this, we don't need others.
It, it needs to happen before, uh, after. So the, so the, so the discussions need to be conceptually done prior to anything happen. Like this, this pizza place. I believe what happened with the pizza place was you came in. Someone came in, I won't say you. And they had a discussion with, I believe, Carol, can you let us know? You know, someone had to.
Well, I think, um, they talked to Karina and, well, I wasn't here. Uh, Jade and Sean, and. You know, they're, they're saying, they're look, they're looking at the ordinance, and of course, they're not as familiar. With the ordinance as I am, and they're not as familiar, we're sitting in front of you for years and years. Uh, like I am, so they looked at. Um, the tourist attraction, they saw that there was a notice of decision. From April twenty-third, two thousand nine, which had an impact saying it's a tourist attraction, and, um. They knew that Alpine Adventures had food services and so did Clark's Turning Post. And those were both tourist attractions, so, um. I think that they looked at the ordinance and they thought. Looks like it's okay in that description, and they said go ahead, so. Um. That's what I.
Well, at one point in time, we had talked, I think. All you might even need to comment that. You know, before we did. If, that's what you can do, before we get, give up permits, that, that there may be some questions on. You know, that it should run by the chair and maybe you. So at least if, if, yeah, two people looking at it, someone might say, the chairman said, hey, look. This needs coming for conceptual review, because there may be questions on this. And, and that way, if it's a simple, someone's putting a deck on and, and something like that, you don't need to do it, but.
Take it, in order to, like, let's talk about how we fix this problem with everything we have going on, this isn't like we're done developing, we're going. So like, we're clearly making an effort to come into the task, that story. Portrays, we walked in, we didn't just do something, we came in and talked about what we were doing. I think that what's important for us to start to do is include, we know what needs planning order. And when we know that, we go through the proper channels, from technical review to, you know, preliminary reviews, like, just like we have plans for, to show you some concepts tonight. I think if I give a global perspective on things that I know, or would be. Saying, I don't believe me planning board at all, but I don't have any problem sharing everything. In an open setting, so everyone's not caught off guard, so if there's a question about something, we can all say, no, that's not. It's not a big development going over there, that's just gonna be storing for dumpsters to, not require, like.
Right. But that's what, that, that's what conceptual review is all about, so all you need to do is get on the, get on the agenda, conceptual review, and whatever project or. That, that you want to do, you bring that in, say, look, this is one I plan on doing, I plan on opening up, uh, a pizza place down here at. The Alpine.
Or Chocotea or whatever, a coffee cart.
Is, is it gonna require anything of me to submit, to have to make site plan review about that, do you, you know, that's, what about parking, is, is there any lighting, or any. What, we're gonna do this, or, or dumpster, or, you know, whatever you're gonna make for, whatever you may make for changes, at least then. You're coming into the board, the board can say, no, there's no, no problem, doesn't look like what you're doing's gonna affect it, anything. In regard to our ordinances, and then, and then you go out here and it's fine, or then we can say, look, it sounds like. You know, some of ours could be affected or something like that, and, you know, they'll, whether it's lighting or. You know, whether it's lighting or. You may have, you know, how many parking spaces do you have, because it's gonna be pretty seating in, so you can, then we can take a look at that, say. You have to get us your seating counts, you have to show us where, you know. For the pizza place, I would say that, you know, you gotta show us, you gotta show us the plan that says how many parking spaces you have there, and how many seats you have on the inside.
And I believe the town actually has a copy, we we we're we're happy to talk about or show that and provide that, we can leave a copy with Carol, so. I have no problem with any of that, the only thing I'd ask of the board is that what we're trying to do is. Be a team player and be courteous to sharing everything we're doing. We're not trying to voluntarily open up public comment for things that don't trigger, right? We don't want to create, like, when I come to planning board, I try to. Like, we're gonna be moving things around, what I'm trying to do in my. Open communication is give enough time that if something really does need it, we talk about it openly, like. Does this really need it? Does it? No, yes, no, when it does, when it does trigger, I have no problem applying. But that way, we're not just applying for the mark.
You may, your interpretation of what it may need and what it may not need. May be different to what. Carol's is, mine is, planning board, so, you know, that's what conceptual review is for.
Right, which I.
You you get the people in the same room, and we can all talk about and 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 get it done, but to just open up stuff. Like restaurants or pizza places, and then, you know. People are asking. That there there's other people who might be doing the same thing and saying, hey, you didn't have to do anything for that, I can wait up to do this. So you you gotta treat everybody fairly too, you know, you can't just. You can't just arbitrarily treat one person different than another. So, you know, you're.
I did apply for permits for all of them, to be fair, so like, I'm just saying that we didn't come in.
So so what what did you just say?
I did come in and apply for permits, like, we didn't do this work without a permit.
Carol, do we get permits? Applications for permits?
Well, just for the Alpine Adventure Pizza.
And for the, and for the.
Did we get one? We didn't get one for any of those either.
We did get one now. Okay, but it was after I put it on the agenda.
Hopefully so, so I'm just, I'm only pointing out that what we're trying to do, we're absolutely on board to, we're not asking for anything special, we're not asking for anything different. We're without question trying to over communicate and be that team, like, open to working to create a good synergy between us. I'm only wanna make sure for the, for the board. We didn't. Just go ahead and do things without coming in and verifying that what we were doing was okay.
So the pizza. Let's take one thing at a time, so so we we can talk about the pizza, because the pizza was the Alpine Pizza's first one. How do we? How would you suggest that we go about getting the information to make sure? That you have enough parking. For the seats and the spaces that you have there.
I would suggest that we include the parking layout that you please already here, but we will add, we'll bring a copy to Carol. For the parking layout that shows the amount of seats versus the parking.
I don't know, well, let's just take one thing out, are there there any questions from the board about anything else other than the parking? That's that's the only thing that I see is the. The comparison of seats versus how many parking spaces. Which will have to go, if you're gonna, I think, and Carol can chime in here, if if you're gonna have. Both. Enemies open at once, then you gotta look at how many parking spaces you need both entities, so when you look at it.
We've done that.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, done that, and same with the apartments, making sure there's not parking drawbacks.
So you all want to do that, so we we can clear up that one?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so then we can move, there was no, no other questions about. Carol, you got that down, and Mark will bring that in?
Yeah.
Then we can talk about the snowfish sushi bar, market place. Though, that part, I guess we might as well talk about. Sushi bar. Bluebird martini bar, Chocolatier, and a very cool coffee. Um, over there, I think the same. Same question i- is over there as far as parking. Um, I met with Carol today. And we need to take a look at that whole building as a whole. And the seats that are in. The square footage. And the seats that are in all all the restaurants over there, all the food places that you have over there where you're serving. And the common areas that 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 don't have. In the uncommon areas, you don't count square footage on. But there's a formula for how many parking spaces supposed to be. So one of the things we need to do is to get that figured out, Sean apparently has. Has taken a look at what's there.
I can, I can help with that, so we have no problem with that, because I believe that there's a tremendous amount of buildings on Main Street that don't, that pre-existed. Non-conforming parking. Requirements, right? So like.
Well, we're talking about that, Bill, let's talk about with.
But what I'm, what I'm, when I look at that building. The way I've interpreted things, and tell me if I'm incorrect here, is that you have pre-existing use of certain space. If you change the use, then it's gonna trigger a review, right? So if you take. One love for what it is, or take, you know, a. Office space and keep it an office space, it's just staying in office space, if you change an office space to turn it into something totally different, that's when we're triggering.
Right, and 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 that was, that was what we were thinking here, was because the. Space that the.
Bluebird Martini was.
Which 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 ones on on outside?
Rhythm.
Is that the sushi bar?
Yeah, well, there was, there was the sort of temporary conference area.
Right.
That I think be morphed into rhythm, it was just. It was just supposed to be like open space, she, Renee was gonna cater. Um, you know, it was gonna be a conference room, a place.
So what I.
So there was no permanent anything, no bar. No, you know, set number of tables or anything like that, it was just. Conference area, and she was gonna be catering in. And nobody o- other than people from Riverwalk and NCZ's. Were gonna use it, so they didn't have to have any extra park.
So let me.
That was, that was what. Um, that that's what the approval was based on.
So when I read the approvals, I noticed that it said charcuterie serving drinks, it had. Existing structure, like, when I say that bar there, I don't know if anyone remembers the rhythm bar. There was.
But the rhythm bar was never approved, you know what I mean?
So I guess the question we need to also determine here is, and this is a a question, something's pre-existing for X amount of time. How do we? Like, how do I, as a landlord, even, like, determine, like? Call Jimmy C's, right? Like, I don't know if Jimmy C's got approved or not, right? I know. Okay. But I'm just using them as an example, like.
I. Think I can answer your question in a way. If you're replacing in kind. Then there's really, and and you don't need to really do a lot, and especially when when I say in kind, I'm talking square footage. Type of business, stuff like that, but if you're not. Replacing in kind, then you gotta take, and and it's your responsibility, I think, because you're the owner, you are the owner of the whole building.
Yes.
So, you can change. Vendor names, right, the vendors come in, if they're in the same square footage, and they're up doing the same thing like a, say, a closed place. And and it's the same square footage. That's not requiring any change, because the parking space requirements don't need to change. Well, one of the things you'll have to be careful of is that if you change from a closed place to a. A restaurant or a small eatery. Then you put tables and seats in. Then the parking space requirement changes, so then you're gonna have to look at. You're, you're gonna have to constantly have something that tells you how many square feet of what you have. And how many parking spaces you have, because you don't, I can tell you that. O- over there now, you don't have enough park.
Well, I would be happy to assess every business that's in there, from Jimmy C's to One Love. Establish how many seats everyone has. Establish where we're short on parking, so at least we can document where we're at, right? So I have no problem with that.
And 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 Sean has done some of that, right? But the only thing we haven't done is the square footage, square, we have a plan with square footage, but it doesn't have. There's two different types of square footage, right, Carol, one is, um.
Well, there's public and non-public, so like, if you have a. A clothing store, and the back half of your store is not open to the public. It's for storage of extra clothing and whatever. And the only, the front half is, then you only have to count the front half, count the front half for parking spaces.
Well, I think, I think what's important for us right now is to get a baseline of where we're at. So I have no problem sticking with the existing, so that's why when I chose this. Sushi sushi restaurant, we kept the bar layout that was existing, we kept the. Bluebird Martini with the same concept, same bar area, like, same same concepts, right? So I knew at that point, at some point, we do wanna do another bigger restaurant someday, potentially in one of the other spaces. If we're converting it from a furniture store to a restaurant, that's without question you need planning. So I think that what would help us for the future is if I get every business to document what's there.
Well, can we, can we can we resolve this one? By saying that Sean will come over. And meet with whoever. If you have someone that you can meet with and and go over every single. Space that's there and count.
Count seats, count square footage, and we.
Tables, count the square footage. And and then come up with. We already have how many parking spaces are there.
And I think that we're gonna, we all, I think we're all in agreement that we're gonna be short. Right, so.
Then we have a problem, if you're short, because, see, what happens, what happens is, all partless here now, yes. But I I can tell you, the night that I went there, when they, when they were, it was the weekend, and it was probably. Month or so ago. You couldn't find a parking space there. And people were using the parking in the other. Well.
They were parking over.
So what I would, what I would say.
Very, it wasn't, it wasn't only that, it was dangerous because they were walking all around, and it. It was, it was a very busy place, but I think one of the problems over there is that we have. That building's using it, and then you have the Riverwalk is using it for employees out back. Then you have the town which owns some parking in the front and allows that to be used for whomever, am I correct on that?
Well, we have a piece of town that's not owned, we don't own a baby. There's a, an agreement that the town gets, I don't know the number of spaces, but a certain number of spaces, but that's on a. Ten year, it's coming up, license permit, is it expired twenty twenty seven?
And then you have the Gypsy using. A bunch of it, so.
But it just, but I guess to to be, to to tell you where I'm, how I feel about, like, I'm just trying to say from a building's perspective. For us to keep existing. Space, like, our goal is to revitalize that property, where businesses, you know, so that is the goal, so by. Definition, we're gonna have way more people using those spots. Now, there is mechanisms in place that we've done, or previous landlords or owners did, like the town parking for the Gypsy, right? We wanna work with everybody, so we've not made, we've made it very clear that we're not trying to police exactly what we have going on, trying to help everything downtown and make it better for everyone. If we get into every business downtown, having to do an analysis of how many seats they can have, and I'm not, I'm.
Let's not talk about all the businesses downtown, let's just keep keep.
Well, we're talking about parking at my property that is for Gypsy apartment, so let's talk about Gypsy then, right, like. If the Gypsy needs my parking, right? That now expires in October, right? I have no problem, it's all working together. To understand that the town has a parking shortage. I'm not asking for anything additional. For the building, I'm simply saying that what's pre-existing, that's been there, One Love. The, you know, retail stores, Bergeron, now, the what rhythm was and now what I put back, right, like. I'm not looking to expand without finding an alternative for parking, and that's why I bought other land and I'm prepared for the long-term future. But I don't think it's fair for tenants that were once permitted, for example, if. I think you said Jimmy C's was permitted, correct?
Well, I think he went, they just replaced something Texas toast, I think, it was in there before, so it was a restaurant.
But, well, I'm with you, but if that, if somehow down the road, before I bought this, go back to when Texas toast was permanent, right? If back in the day, at some point, calculations were done improperly. That allowed for too many seats. For the amount of parking. Now, that is not what I'm, like, what I'm proposing is, let's document it. But to be able to try to, and I don't think we're far off, I just think that we need to be aware of who, what people are using for seats.
But I think that, oh, I'm sorry, what did you say?
First of all, I I think the idea of documenting it, counting spaces and documenting what's there is a good idea. Right, so that we know.
I agree.
What's there. Um, but but, you know, we have to go back to nineteen eighty six, or whatever, when that was built. Um, there was not enough parking on that day. So just like.
Can I ask that, how how do you make that assumption? How can you make that assumption, because you don't know, we don't have any documentation to show that.
We we have historical knowledge of what was there, and we know that the parking spaces haven't changed.
You don't know exactly what was there in that.
Well, I guess, I, depending on the building is square, right, the building was built based off square footage in a mall setting, right? So retail, retail food, beverage, I have no, I wanna document it, I'm only. Trying to set the tone of like, and I'm asking, this is why I'm asking questions like the Gypsy, right? Now, if I didn't renew the parking, because I need it for. Now Jimmy C is my tenant, does that mean that the Gypsy lost parking and they have to remove seats?
They'll have to do something, that's your parking that you need for your building, okay? And if it changes, and if you, if you change the makeup of what's in that building, you have to change it to still live live within the. Parking that you have.
But what if I'm not changing it, I'm keeping with my time, just like, what I'm trying to do is.
So it just needs to meet parking requirement, that that that's all I'm saying.
So you're.
If you make changes or you leave it the way that, you've got to meet parking requirement. Just like anyone else that comes in here and 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 be safe. So, well, you know, you got so many tables, and you gotta have so many.
They'd be treating everybody the same a lot. Okay, so so Mr. Embrasia should be changing the parking and not mine.
No.
No, but but that means that under that idea as well.
If he keeps, if he keeps going, bridges. Uses the same. Okay, in other words, the martini bar is in where, um, I'm sorry, the the sushi bar is in where. What used to be an ice cream place, and then was a coffee place. It was food service, then food service, then food service, and now it's gonna be food service. Where's the change in use? The Chocolatier was was previously three hundred three gift shop, retail. It's retail now, it was before that, the ski shop, retail, so from retail to retail to retail to retail. Where's the change in use of that? We're we're not treating everybody here, we're saying, when you don't change, when you, when you're, when you're changing the the the. Um, tenant, but not the use, you're saying that he needs to go for site plan review and it hit a parking. I'm saying that doesn't trigger site plan review, it's not a change of use.
What he needs, what triggers the change of uses, park. If he.
No, it's the use.
If if he.
Change. The the selection view. Is a change of use.
No, you don't.
I'm okay.
Carol.
So I'm just asking, so event space with no bar, no nothing, just chairs and tables. And they were going to go from Riverwalk, the restaurants in Riverwalk, and bring, or Renee was gonna do catering. Okay. So, does that mean that that has turned the use of that space into a restaurant? Is the event space the same as a restaurant?
Look.
Because that's what it was, I'm just trying to understand. We're staffed and we're totally befuddled, so.
It shouldn't matter what it was. Matters is what it, what it is and what you're changing it to and what you have to park. It it's a floating thing that always changes. The size of this piece of paper doesn't change, what you put on it changes, you know, I mean, it's the same as it, whatever's in that building. You have, if you're gonna change it. You have to, you have to make it change to meet the required, the parking requirements, because the parking requirements is one of the biggest problems. I don't wanna see one-year businesses. That parking area be so busy that it affects the other people on the other side, that. That that building and their businesses, so they don't have parking spots, when they came in for change to some of those businesses. We made them do a parking plan, it showed us how many spaces they had for what they intended to do. And they had to go through all the businesses, and they had, and they had to identify the parking spots. That's all I'm saying to you, it it's your building. I'm, and whatever you put in it is up to you, but you have to make sure as the owner that you meet the requirement of parking. Now, if 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 the Gypsy or any other business is taking some of those parking spots, that's up to you to deal with that business. So, because they're taking your parking spots for your business.
So I guess to answer the question. To answer, I guess, to restate what I've. I have no problem when I change the use. Coming in to make sure I either reduce a nonconformity, meaning if I have a pre-existing nonconforming parking layout. And I change a use. I know I can't get any more parking, I know I can't get any more use, I've maximized the use, not me, but previous. You know, when it was built, however you wanna look at it. Then if I wanna come in and change a furniture store to a restaurant, I know that the use. Then if I wanna come in and change a furniture store to a restaurant, I know that the use is gonna be more demanding on parking and I need to come in with a solution for that additional spots. If I keep within what was already there, I'm gonna continue to operate it as is or tenants operating it toward staying like I. We continue to operate just as all the businesses would do on Main Street.
Well, what, what Carol was saying was, so that the place where your sushi bar is now was a. There's some convention used to, like convention, it swapped, it swapped from maybe the, maybe the coffee bar or whatever it was before. And it went to a convention, it had no food, the food was brought in from other places, it had no liquor nor another. So now, once, I think Carol's point was, once you change it to that convention space use. And then you, you go back to a sushi bar use, does that?
It wasn't a convention use, what, whether they permitted that way, I'm not, I don't have.
We had the medicine.
I don't have, I don't know when it was permitted, right? But the use, so.
Two thousand nineteen.
So.
Two thousand nineteen, nine or twenty.
Cause I, they had a liquor license there, right? That, in order to serve liquor, they needed to have food present on property, you cannot bring it in. So meaning for the state liquor commission to approve that property, you needed to be able to serve food at that location. So knowing your liquor license. Yeah, that's where you go.
Been inside it was there.
Meaning you, we're serving alcohol, so when they're, when you're.
To the public.
To the public, so when you're serving alcohol to the public, you need a food use, you need to have all your seats documented, you had to go through the health department. You had to go through all those mechanisms, so what we did as building owners, we knew right from the get-go. We're not looking to change uses here, we don't wanna, we don't, we're trying to just reopen things that were closed, right? And that space we were bummed they moved across, so we said, alright, let's reopen, same concepts, same bar layout, didn't move the bar to the big side. Kept simple things, we have charcuterie, just like they had charcuterie up in the martini bar. So I have the utmost respect for keeping with the existing plan. If we modify anything, which I'm not looking to do right now, right, I'm just trying to keep it easy and help open businesses and revitalize the place. If we modify anything, we have no problem coming, showing exactly what we have existing. And what I'm volunteering to do is to do all of our seat calculations for every tenant, give all that to the town, so we have a benchmark. Because I believe there's not that benchmark for everybody on Main Street, I don't think everybody's being accurately depicting how many seats they have versus what was permitted back when they did.
And, and we're gonna start, we are gonna start looking at that, Carol has given us a sheet to show some of those things, but that, that's not what we're here tonight to discuss. It, it's what you have and I think my concern is that. I, I like the fact that you are volunteering to. Do that count for the spaces and for the seats? My concern is, is that we need some sort, I think we need to have some sort of commitment that if the parking. Requirements for those spaces, it's a lot more. If it's one or two or three more, that's not a big issue, if it's twenty-five or so more, then that's gonna cut into. Like the, the other.
Can I give you what?
And, and, and I don't, I don't think that's fair, and I think we'll have to address that one way or the other.
So what, what concerns me is not my, right now, what concerns me is that I have a lease that's coming up with the town. That we have spots that the gypsy and other people rely on, that we do have the most parking, right? So like, yes, we're a big building, but we're trying to revitalize that area and make it so people can walk and make it so people can walk around and not have to drive everywhere. So as we're doing all that and our plans as the development unfolds to create an environment where you walk around everywhere, right? To even a nice new bridge with the rotary and walking and, but part of this concept is to be able to not have to drive and find mechanisms to do that. I don't want to negatively affect other businesses, it doesn't matter that it's not my building or my business. I wanna try to keep it in an environment where it's as much of a town lot as possible, where everybody can, you might go to the Chocolateeer and get a bag of chocolate, but then. Walk over and get dinner at the gypsy or, you know. In an effort to document, I'm happy to document anything, but I don't wanna limit or put a. Put in the minutes of here, I'm, I'm willing to limit it to X until we know where, where are we at? Cause I want accuracy in what's there, I don't wanna try to.
Unfortunately, town regulations don't allow that.
It, it does, I.
Tell me where it does.
A pre-existing non-conformant.
Pre-existing non-conformant, but you, once you change things. I haven't, that just talks about the use, that doesn't talk about the parking, that talks about the use of the proper, it has nothing to do with the parking. Look, you say you don't want.
Where's the parking?
I think that's all, thank you. I think that if you're gonna affect, you know, it's all, it's all well and good. You said you want everybody to be able to have, be nice and get along and someone over here can park over there if they wanna go to Gypsy. But where the rubber meets the road is when they can't park there or they can't get over. In the other parking lot because it's full and, and some of those vendors over there don't have parking. Then, then that's where the problem is created, that's why the ordinance speaks specifically to address. Your needs and your building with your parking, if people are parking over there. Unless you can control that or have a, you know, you have some sort of a gate there, you can't do nothing about that. But if you meet the requirements, then, and then that's all, that's all really matters and that's what the ordinance is there for, that's what the town voted the ordinance in for.
I totally agree when it comes to.
I just wanna know where that is in the ordinance. If, 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 if he's not changing the use. You said, even if you're not changing the use, but the parking changes, you have to commit for a site plan review.
If, if, if he's, if the parking doesn't meet the requirement of the town ordinance. Then hell, I'll come in and wrestle with the planning board, whether it's site plan and review or whatever, you can't allow.
Well, I think what, um, OJ is saying, and I think you mean the same thing. What's there existing, you know, or there existing that was permitted is grandfathered. So if you keep replacing retail with retail, or actually retail is actually a bunch of different things. A restaurant is its own separate category, so it's more a problem if you are replacing retail with a restaurant. Which is a more intensive requirements for parking, um, then it becomes a problem, so, you know, he. So that, so it's only gonna happen if it's a change in use. The problem that we have now is what's there now is some, which is not, do not get permanent.
Well, I think once we identify, I think what Mark's saying is, is a good thing, once you identify it, then. We can address what it really is, because right now, you don't really have an idea of how far it's either over, under, or if it meets. I don't either, but I think once you identify that. We should be able to go to you and say, hey, Mark, look, you know, it's, you're just fine, no problem, there's only a couple here and there, that's fine, or if it's a lot. I, I think you would wanna say, hey, look, you know, I, I've got people in here too that need this park, they wanna be able to get in there and go to these places, they're not gonna be able to get in there.
I have no problem, all I'm trying to make sure I do is not connect to something that, like, we're gonna look at what the number is. What I don't, what I don't.
Why don't we get there first?
Because I think that once we get there, what I'm looking to do is I, I'm not looking to trigger any change of use. At that building, when we are looking, there will be a day that I want to, I'm sure there will. When that day comes, I know I will have to address parking and all the other items, in the meantime, I'll give a benchmark for when that day comes. So it's, if you fast forward, if I give all the details of what's there, then we know, okay, I wanna change the furniture store or. The, the, the something retail store into a sub shop, I know, okay, I need an extra seven spots and I don't have it, what am I gonna give up else? What am I gonna do to accommodate that?
So how do you quantify, how, how do you fix? If in fact there are a lot less parking spaces there than you need, how do you fix that so that? That the owner, the imputer, is not losing any of his parking spaces to your business? Cause that's not fair either.
It's not fair for me as a building to change my use and make a pre-existing non-conforming worse. But it's also not fair for me as a owner of a building to be held to any standard that's different than anybody. So if we as a town, and I, me included, because I bought land to cover my butt in this, wanna get together and make sure everybody meets the parking regulations. We can do that, but if, if everyone's pre-existing, non, pre-existing parking doesn't match what was permitted, right? Because this happened previous years.
I can't deal with what we, this board can't deal with what happened. With, with someone aboard, I mean, we have to look at making things right, isn't, that's what we're supposed to be here to do is to make things right and, and make them better. Not to just say, okay, just because it existed, we're gonna keep it going, go ahead, OJ.
You always talk about feeling people the same.
Okay.
Yeah, so Mark's question was, if you're gonna make him do this, are we gonna do, we, we, we dealt with the depot. And we, we know that they're under, let the requirements fall in, we're gonna make them do it.
I was unaware of how much consistency and, and accuracy there is at the, at the parking in town. Carol, maybe she.
I saw that.
Yeah, that's it, there's, there's a lot of places and we need to go to them and say, hey, look, you need to change. Your business model or whatever you need to do or improve your parking, because what it's doing is it's messing up everybody else in town.
But now, if I'm out.
That's not fair.
But it's not fair.
Where is that in the land, where does, where does the planning board get their right to do that? Where is it in the R S A, where is it in Orlando's plan?
It is in there.
Well, it is.
Yeah, I'll have to find it, and, and I will find, bring it to you.
Okay, and what I would. I'll work on looking what's there, trying to document what's accurate, accurately, that's what I'm.
That's what I'm looking for.
And then I also understand that we have a parking issue throughout the town.
But that's what we're here to talk about tonight is, we're here to talk about what you have and what you do to make it right. But we'll deal with those other people, the other businesses when. As, as time to you spend as we can, but we need to do that, we have a, we have a real big problem with how it part, so.
But so the candy store that just opened sweets or what, I, I know that they're. Like, I'm using examples, if they're a business, that's now new use, they're in a big space, there's a lot of square footage. Any business that changes, like, what I'm trying to get at is, I'm not trying to hold my tenants. In retroactively, I wanna get accurate numbers.
How is that a change of use?
I'm not, I'm not, it's not a change of use, it's a new business.
Be careful the word, because it's absolutely not a change of use, that was retail, correct?
Right, I'm not, I shouldn't say.
What was in there before?
Retail.
No, I'm talking about not the candy store, the Chocolateeer, I'm talking about the other, I'm talking about other.
Uh, furniture.
So that was a furniture store?
No, 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 we're not, we're talking about the one downtown, not in our building.
The one that looks, um, they used to. Roger skiing sport and then they changed the exterior, they made it look like a log cabin, has all the candies on the outside. That was retail, that's always been retail.
So, right. But it wasn't food retail, it was retail as far as, and it then had seats, which now it has seats.
The candy store has seats?
Yes.
Right in the banana.
Oh, no, no, the Chocolateeer.
The Chocolateeer.
Chocolateeer.
It's still retail.
Right, regardless, what I'm. What I'm pointing out here is that there's a lot of changes of businesses throughout the entire town, I'm happy to be on the forefront of looking at our parking. But I think that we're gonna be, we, we, we wanna be held to the same standards as everybody else.
You need to be held to the standard that the town people have voted in, and, and I'm not gonna sit here and discuss what other people have or don't have. Cause we need to, we need to go talk to them as well, we need to have conversations with them as well. But the standards that the town voted in, is what all these people who come to the town meetings vote on, when they vote on these ordinances. So, I mean, you can't just sit there and say, oh, we're gonna let it go, it's not us, it's all the people who come to vote in the town and say, this is what we want for an ordinance. I mean.
I, I'm fine with it, that, that's. So, I'm, I'm gonna be talking about another project in a minute, it's gonna be about parking and how many spots I have versus how many things and I, I'm very much on board.
Let's see, let's see if we can get onto that, so you will work, you will have somebody.
We're gonna work with Sean, Carol, to do a parking analysis and square footage.
Inventory of what you have for seats and square footage and what you have for, and, and Sean has a plan. That shows all the parking spaces that you have there current, so you, and, and he has an accurate count. So you should be able to compare those two and then, then we'll pitch back in and, and discuss what it is.
Yeah.
One sheet says you have a hundred and seventy spots, another one says you have one seventy-seven.
Yeah.
And you have more square foot of parking than your two building, you know, it sucks it up pretty quick, doesn't it?
Yeah, and that's right, it's, it's, you know, ultimately, parking is a concern we all share.
Yeah, and it is, I mean, it, it, Mark, it's getting more of it, so we had someone come in here and talk to us one night. About all the parking in the town and how.
So I'm referencing other.
Park, parking was the number one concern to this, this individual. And he just kept listing stuff and saying that he had people that would be willing to help build parking garage season, you know, but, um, that. That's where we're going, because we, you know, it, it seems like it's more and more of an issue in town. As the towns get busier and busier, so we can't just keep going the way we were, we better try and make it right so that. We're getting better at it instead of making it worse or staying the same, if, if the same is worse, then we can't stay the same, we gotta try and make it better, like, my opinion.
I, I agree, and I think that the first step is just documenting it, because you don't know what we gotta deal with, and then I also think that. On a space basis is understanding, you know, I don't know, this'll be a question for another day, of just what is the thresholds of? How can you get parking, is there a way of reducing your parking requirement? Meaning, having multiple businesses, you know, one group, a lot, so that's gonna be down the road with that.
The way to do that would be to, to come and talk to the planning board at another time and have, have the planning board take a look at. Changing the parking requirements on their, on, in, in their ordinances. So that, I mean, that, that, that's one way of changing things, if you think you have enough and if it's not bothering somebody else, maybe those requirements could be reduced. You know, but, you know, you, to me, that's the way to go, because then, again, everybody's being treated fairly and people who have voted in these ordinances, they're. That's what they think you're doing, so, so, so we've gone through the outline and we've gone through all four of those other ones. Carol, are you satisfied that we, we can? Do you have any other questions, anyone on the board, any other questions above for these?
Well, I didn't have, I, I wasn't involved in any of the other ones, so, um, I was not aware that they had applied. I've been busy with other things.
So do you have any questions about?
So are all those, okay, so I can put stuff in your packet. Because it's, it's becoming difficult for us to tell the difference between retail food. Which, um, we don't need to worry about, uh, additional parking. Oops. Thank you, Sean. We, the staff are having difficulty figuring out the difference between, because the lines are blurred between retail food. So we don't need to worry about changing the character, changing the use. Um, and, you know, we've done a lot of hair splitting to avoid having to address parking, we did that at the depot, we did that. Pretty much every place in town, um, in order to avoid having to find additional parking in places where there was inadequate parking. So, I don't know how successful it was up at the depot, you know, with the thrift shop and the cup that now has a coffee shop in it. But if you, uh, I think that we should consider defining restaurant or, um, adopting. The state statutes that have to do with restaurants, which you, I put in your packet. Or maybe you say these five things are considered retail, um, food. And these other three things are considered restaurants, so that we don't get into this, you know. Staff judgment call and this is.
This is my recommendation to Carol, we. You have a technical beauty. You and Sean and Jay, I think, should get together and take a look at what you recommend us. To either change or take a look at, or definitions, bring it to the planning board. You as the planner and say, look, we think that we need to, we should include a few more definitions and. Should, should, one should be a restaurant, one should be a, a bar, one should be, you know, whatever you think, and, and, and define those. And that, where there, we can, we can then take a look at how to put those on the list of, what, what they require, less parking. How to put those on the list of what what they require less parking because there's less. You know, like you're less people there and and a and a chocolate here versus a a martini bar, you know, so. I mean, you know, you take a look at an ice cream place, and I was using the analogy the other day that. So, an ice cream place, you you got thirty thirty people in line. Those thirty people might each have a car, but in a restaurant, four people come in one car. So I mean, you know, you could have more people using a a ice cream. This country than you can, you know, a restaurant, so that's why I'm saying it it. It should be the staff kind of. The planning staff that makes a recommendation about what you wanted, what you think needs to be changed and just bring it to us.
Um, I think Joe wants to come.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I can see.
Did you go into a ice cream bar?
If you're eating an ice cream Sunday, might be there a while. I agree. Gonna be a big one.
Too hot, before we get into the new projects we have before you tonight.
Uh, okay, Carol, were you done with that?
Yeah, when you, when you do that, can you just say what the previous thing was for those different?
For the different spaces?
The different spaces.
Do you, oh, that, sorry.
You know, just say, okay, so like, whatever the martini bar is, whatever that was before.
Yeah, absolutely. You can show what I think would be important is to document. What's there, but what was been there, right? So you see, like, like, although one of them has been there, here's what it's been, here's what it is. Y'all know now Jimmy C's is there, and we can get an accurate depiction of whatever it is.
Okay.
That would be good. Do they have, Carol, do they have the copies of what you gave me or do they give you the box?
No, they don't have the copy, but I could give them uh Jim's copy. Hold on.
Okay. If you could do that that way there, you'll see. And you'll be able, you know, use that.
Yeah.
Some of them have square footage that's already on them.
And then I have an ad built I've done in the building, and then what I'll do is go meet with each ten individually and then document seats and what it. What it is, so we can get a baseline, and then also look at what we have in parking and what we also have in town parking. I think what we'll do is itemize out how many spots we've allocated back to the town as well.
Yeah, that would be good.
So you can keep them.
Are those the plans you gave? Do any Carol, the bigger ones that have all the? Uh parking on and the, okay. Does anyone else on board have any questions or comments like this?
Eighty percent of the year, it's probably not a problem anyway, is it? But. No, no, it's fine over by as well right now, that's what I'm saying.
No, and and.
It's just a few weekends.
And we also need to, you know, my goal for all the real estate that we're doing. Is to create a vibrant environment, so people can walk around, shop, and walk and go places, so. It's it's change, we're only trying to change it in a manner that's productive, we're not. Overbear.
A few weeks a year is probably paying the beast's true, but.
So before we get into the, you know, move move on. I don't, Paul Bartlett's here, he owns the other. Sex, Paul, do you, do you have any, do you have any questions or comments you wanna make? Uh, yeah, well, he he's in the butter, so I.
You know, I've gone to the local times. Uh, I'm shot at two spaces over.
And I'm sorry, I bugged off the microphone, please. Just grab the red microphone right there.
Sad to say that. It was a restaurant. That you people know that after so many seats. Uh, it's too many parking space, so many chairs, the rest. And. My point to her was, we have a post office. Which is closed on Sunday. We have a bank which is closed on Sunday. And. Those spaces not being used by anybody. We have, I won't give them up. But he also, the theater. Was built when movies were in the heyday. And you folks, if you live in town. Know that theater is not having the capacity. Yeah, it restricts me from putting maybe another restaurant in there, so I don't have enough. Seats on the, yeah, zones. No, I think there should be some flexibility. And taking into account what exists there now. You've got those spaces available on Sunday. And you've got a day and a half on Saturday. Uh, they should be used and somehow they give me a lot of, not my means sake. For what goes in there, the people in our town who need that space. Maybe they're writing something out. But I think the law is just too rigid, because they say you can't do this. We never have four hundred people in that, which we did. We don't have a Saturday or Sunday operation. I just think there should be some flexibility. Now, in this law.
I mean, maybe the flexibility could be what Carol was saying too, is that.
Well, I think.
The definition of, if you take a look at movie theater, you know that movie theater. Even though it has X amount of seats. They're not all gonna be filled at all times, or if there's a post office there and it's not gonna be open. So, it's all in the, what you assign to the calculation thing. Now.
Well, I think we had that discussion, we had that discussion with the depot. And we also had that discussion with Alcharos, um, you know. When we were looking at the parking spaces, um, we did make a note of that, um, so I remember correct.
So what they do in other towns that we're very familiar with is. We would, instead of trying to create a a use table that gets super complex, like how busy is the movies or the post office. You have a reduction that's by special permit through the planning board. So, that way, on a case by case, the planning board has the authority. To reduce the parking requirements if the use makes sense, so. Uh, it's hard to predict exactly what's gonna be next, right? So you make a bylaws, oh geez, movies could be busy or not busy, or. You know, whatever, you know, the post office turns into the delivery for Amazon and all of a sudden it's. You know, like, busy. So as things change, if you make a requirement to say, here's our requirements, you know, we're all familiar with. If you want a reduction, so like when I work in a lot of towns, they say you can have up to a fifty percent reduction, but here's what we're looking for. Is it different times a day? Is it residential use? They're they're encouraging mixed use, like they wanna have residential apartments too. Or is it, you know, this cafe closes at a certain time of day and then another one opens? Um, you're, those are the things, but on a case by case basis, it gives. A mechanism in which an Alcharo or a whatever tenant, so if I had a new tenant that wanted to open a new business. Instead of me saying, hey, it's cut dry, this is one table, and it's like, well, I'm not that anymore, I'm a new type of thing, I'm a oxygen bar, I'm something that's so unique. We don't know what it is, would be. Their mechanism would be going to the planning board and asking for relief based off of what they're, and then that could be approved or denied at your discretion.
I may, there's one more thing that that bothers me, a personified, ten year plan for Lord Mount. For that hairy under last week. Uh, it's a beautiful thing for the company that I was scared and I love them out. But they keep on talking about taking these improvements, additions of chairs. And I've always asked starting ten years ago, what the hell? Or where the hell are you to put the parking for all these people? Oh, you know, you know. You never get an answer, right? One answer, one's one thing I suggested. So that they put another deck on the main parking, oh, can't do that. You know, we won't do that. But. Where are all those cars? If you have room for eight thousand people now, which is, speaking of, you heard. No, that does something for thousand or three thousand more. Where are those side guns gonna pop?
I think I'm gonna be on the hook creating a law of parking. I think, I think that, like, just to give you, like, what I'm seeing is, the bylaws in the parking. Are like the fast forward of the parking conversation is that we, like, we have a building in front of you that, you know, we're looking at twenty eight units because we know we need fifty six spots, right? So now I have to carve out fifty six spots. Uh, what it's gonna do is, we look at it like, once we keep building out South Peak. Can't build new without adding a lot of parking for those people that you're building, that's just part of the bylaw. Now, we're trying to understand, once we're adding all these places, how do we make a community walkable? How do we get people moving around in a manner that you don't have everybody like. Leaving their homes and all, trying to drive and get stuck. Um, so that's where, in general, making sure all those different, you know, functions are gonna be done. Because I do think that's one of the big pushes on, at least on our development itself, because we know. We've gotta provide, you know, we build another condo building, gotta get our parking lamps, next building parked.
I mean, one of the things with parking too is. When you try to share parking, or or what I call double selling it, you know, so. Once business is open during day, the next business is open at night, so you kinda, you know, they're next to each other, so you get to use the parking. Then also, when the business changes, so you you can't use that, and that's when the mess gets created, you know, and that's when. They have a hard time with it, and and.
It's hard to track too.
It it's hard to track and it, you know, so, I I think. If if we can make something that would be a little less. Less stringent, but address it more towards the actual use of it. And 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 as Carol was just saying, you know, maybe you need to find a restaurant versus a. Martini bar or 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 a chocolate here, whatever, and. Take a look at those parking space requirements and. They'll they'll be a little less, because as you said, that postal service could be an Amazon place tomorrow, and the next thing you know, there's no parking, so.
Well, what we wanna do is create a mechanism in which as an end user, and this is not specifically for my businesses, because I have plenty of things that I'm focused on. But an end user could come in and say, I wanna change this and add six seats, and they say, okay, what are you gonna? You know, how, what are you getting for relief? And then I think in the meantime is, the more we document. As landlords and businesses and buildings. The more we have the baseline, tend to come from. Uh, so I think the more we can do that, the better.
Well, I think businesses gotta keep track of what the changes are too, so if they're. If they're the same, same uses, but you're taking up more space over you expect to be it. An up and coming business that's gonna be attracting more people, then you gotta take a look at it, because it could be affecting your other businesses too. You know, so, I mean, that that's.
We see, we, we have to have everyone play nice to each other and work it, absolutely. We're uh, we're we're aware.
Okay, so. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, so we'll move on here. To the conceptual of South Peak L S A family base camp. Ever had a temporary tenant to a building, want to look at formally discussed possibility. Of conversion of the family base camp, temporary construction to a permanent structure. From the site plan review application is not required. And and your packets, we have that, and Carol has some bigger plans. Hopefully we can see it, we can see this.
Is that the same thing that we have in the little?
Okay, so, let's let's. Let's get back to the, the family base.
Family base, let's start, I guess, we know that, if you look at the layout here, there's the larger condo building, we have, we know that's coming to planning board, so I. Almost say what's, we, that one second. And yes, focus.
Yeah, we're talking about family base.
So family base a lot, you know, that was always a structure that we built, um, the white tent. It's in forty, it's a terrible fire hazard, as it said, we will, as we build the building next door to it. We've realized it's time that we invest into that, just put a new shell on it. We're not proposing any changes to the layout of the interior, not any seat changes, not any kitchen layouts. We simply want to infest, if we wanna try to keep the existing plumbing, water, heating system. And we wanna go in there and remove the end structure and reframe and restructure. In doing so, we would have to meet with the state fire laws and state code to make sure that now we meet what the fire ratings are what. Soon we trigger them, we'll do that, uh, standards. We, this is a project we get caught complaining more about as far as use of that. But uh, any days camp, we did come and talk about that a few months ago. Um, so we don't have any change of what we discussed that. Uh, in all the layouts that were committed and gone through the town, they.
So you're saying that. All of the interior spaces are gonna stay the same. In the basement and.
I will. Let's go through the door layouts. They're proposing a new door location, it's more simple. So.
Okay, uh, if we're looking at A one forty one. That's the first door.
So, if you look at. The first demo page. What is that?
Team one.
Team one.
Team one. The big one's on both.
I don't think it's all the big ones, it's really not, it doesn't show much, all it's, all it's, all it's showing you. Here is that the only difference is, it's the outside wall, so if you pick the wall of the bar. It's just weird entrance into it, we want to make it more centrally located.
Uh, D one is in the big one, every. The big one, go back a couple of pages.
All right, yeah.
Kind of chose the doors, that you were talking about, central location.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um. That is the, um. The reason we're here, and I just talked like. I guess, the case in point where we had a conversation, we're here to ask the question, like, like. We're gonna want to be updating this building as far as the shell, we don't wanna change the use, we don't wanna change the seat count, we don't wanna change the kitchen. We simply wanna build. Uh, more.
A new facade.
New facade, so the the question here is, we know right now it doesn't mean any fire codes, there's no fire rating at all. We did work with the state to make sure that we wanted to make sure this was gonna be in compliance and understanding what are the fire rating walls between the new nest building and. Everything going on here. Uh, so we wanna build into today's code as far as structure, wind load, snow load. Uh, but as far as the use of the planning board is, you know, is this something that we would work through the town, work through? With Carol and Sean to pull permit and do it properly that way? Or is the planning board?
So you're not changing any of the exterior dimensions? Right, you're not changing. Anything of the interior except for that, that door?
Yeah. Correct.
And there's been the shell of it, right?
The shell of the building and the door. So of course, yeah.
Just the outside and and the door.
So there's no in increase in fixtures or there's no lighting changes on there, exterior lighting changes?
I would, I would assume there will be some better exterior light, meaning. Like, we put a light over the door, there wasn't one on the tent house, so all the things that we would be doing would be things that we would be applying to the town as far as the permit goes. So like, any thing that we've done would be applied for with a permit. Um, it's just more of the processing which. We obtain that permit.
Looks a lot better than the tent, yeah. I mean. It's it's not changed in any of the exterior dimensions. I can't see where, Carol, correct me if I'm wrong, I can't, I can't see where it would require anything. Actually, in all honesty, except for a building permit from the town.
You know, Landy's permit, yeah.
Yeah, Landy's part of building, yeah.
Well, we're not committed. I said, we can't call it a building permit, because we're not allowed to.
We, we just wanted to, back to the conversations that have come up. We, this is a first effort in always bringing everything to you guys and just trying to be, showing you what we've got.
But I think I would love, what I would like to suggest is that. You submit a letter. Um, stating that there there will be no changes. So we'll have it for the record. Statement that you're gonna just change exterior, that there will be no. Um.
I guess the per plans that you see.
No change in in fixtures or the amount of water usage, you know, water units or sewer units, things like that, so. It'll be documented through that. But the 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 only change will, is going to be. It'll be documented through that, but the the only change will, is going to be, and put it on paper, and then. And then submit that to to the planning department, and uh, and they'll be able to give you that land use permit, go ahead, Carol.
Um, yeah, we discussed this uh, earlier today, and uh, this is a commercial building, so they're gonna have to get a building permit from the. State Fire Marshal's office, um. So, um, and and they, we we talked about it already earlier today, but I just wanted to let you know that's. You know, it's not a, it's not a. Single family home or duplex, so.
You know, all about, so.
Yeah.
But if you just put it in writing. Then, you know, that's the only thing I can think of, OJ, anyone else? Where can you be a big enough? If you can do that work, we would, uh.
Yeah.
Do you want? Do you want, uh, let's, let's make a motion to that effect, that way we have it in the minutes. Okay, I'll make the motion. Make the motion that the. Little semi base log at South Peak as presented by Mark Progion. Um, and you can use the. Sign number with something on it. Yeah, base log at South Peak. Alright, I don't put you to read all of this.
Should say, I made that motion.
I made that move.
Whether you'll have it for your records soon, if the whole board changes, Mark.
Alright, so now on to the conceptual review of the next project.
I want to.
You look at the back.
They are on the semi base camp, owner would like to formally discuss proposal for residential condominium, condominium building. Uh, to the east of semi base. And we have a plan that.
Parking, was that thirty grand spot?
Open air or not, so it comes out. Parking garage that is open air, meaning if it's like a deck parking, that's a lot less, that's gonna be more like a forty five, forty to fifty thousand per car. So if you get closed, like it's a company, it's a variety of doors, now you're up in like seventy five thousand plus. Um, and you have to do the makeup air and all the parts, and everything you have to put into it, so like, some of the designs we're looking for long term. Is understanding, working with the fire, to keep sides open, so you kinda come into this big open parking garage, also fire suppression and everything is involved.
Okay, so go ahead and present the way.
So, so this building is one of, is, um, one of the. First building on partial of smaller condo scale, so this is back to what we first discussed, now we have some bigger units and all this, we need some smaller units that are also gonna be part of the plan. So, we looked at this site, um, from a, you know, look and feel, we wanna map, we've done it, and that, and then what you're seeing at the. Semi base, the new design that we had there.
What are these units gonna be?
These units are gonna be one to, one or two bedroom.
Are they going to be?
For sale condos. Come three bedrooms, yes.
I'm sorry, Carol, no more than three.
So we have a question about that on the parking, we can get there?
No, I didn't, no, I I just wanted to know what.
Yeah, so it's.
What's the use of the?
These will be for sale condos.
For sale condos.
For sale condos, that will be no more than three bedroom units.
So some will be one, some will be two, some will be three.
Yeah, that's some of the questions we have for the board when we get into unit count. Right now, it's the same parking requirement, whether you have a one bedroom or a three bedroom.
That's correct.
And it's something that I think is, we we don't wanna, like, it's silly for us to say, if it's a two bedroom, I guess, make more bedrooms, yet we don't necessarily. We thought that was in, one bedroom and three bedroom, you think we'd have a different parking requirement? But we don't, they don't, so, um, it's just proof of thought for the future, but. Uh, what's in front of you guys, and what we are doing is meeting the guidelines that were presented as far as two spots for every unit. So, we have made sure that the spots are all gonna be under the building, so they're all indoor spots. Um, so you'll drive under, um, in the garage door, and then we allow for fifty six parking spots. We've also made sure that there's a drop off in an area for people to go be able to go up and drive, that we do not use in our cal- our parking calculations. So what we did is, we wanted to make sure that there's a guest or somebody that came, that be space for them to come up there and drop things off, or.
He said fifty six parking spots. Well, that was getting way more of up to twenty eight.
Units.
Units.
Yes, because the twenty eight units, you need two spots per unit regardless of the bedroom, under three meter, for three benders.
And so.
We don't have it in the design, as far as today, what we're here to propose is, we're not at a spot where we have floor plans, but here's what we wanna propose, right? We're trying to get ahead of a conceptual, to talk through it, but, so we understand that in order to get, uh, twenty eight units. We need fifty six spots, so that's how we've allocated fifty six spots inside the building.
So, you you've got something right in front of another one?
Sorry.
He does have garage layout.
Okay, you don't see that, okay, sorry.
You don't have garage layout?
Yeah, so, yeah, and those are the design for the specific unit owners, so like, they would not be shared outside of the unit, so if your unit, if you have a one bedroom unit, you're getting two spots. You could get tandem.
Yeah.
And that's just.
Well, I mean, that, that that would be a concern that I would think I would have would be safety wise to have one in front of another. There's a number of fire in there, and the one in the back can't get out, not that they would wanna get their car out anyway, but. I mean, it's just one car fire, a fire in there, um, is is that, is that, and and I've never designed, like, it's. There, they typically back then, we didn't, they weren't allowed to be one in front of the other, or that wasn't standard practice, is it?
It is standard now.
It is standard to be able to stand in front of another?
And because what we're gonna need to do in order to meet the fire code and everything is involved, there, it's situated such that, you know, in the event of an emergency, things like even like the elevators are gonna be shut down. The park needs, you're gonna be removed, the garage doors, you know, cause you're in that fix, so the, um. What means, everything we're designing, we've already went in, we didn't wanna propose something to the board without meeting the state fire marshal. So, what we've done is had several meetings with state fire marshal to understand all the guidelines. And make sure that what we're proposing to you also met the state fire marshal, because we will be working with them on a permit. So, that's.
So, before you talk.
Uh, how many employees are gonna be in this building?
There won't be any employees, these will be for sale condos.
For sale condos.
And maintenance, you have maintenance staff in the building?
The maintenance staff will be, you know, on track, servants, says Nick. So we do have parking up front, and there's additional spots, so you'll see turnarounds and drop offs, some of the curving that we're actually designing is meant to park over too. We also have a parking court in the front, but what we're trying to do is landscape the front, so the way that this building's designed is actually fitting into the landscape. So the front of the building actually is getting softened by bringing, keeping grade, adding grade, adding trees. But then, instead of just a big parking lot, we're changing texture, so if you look at that plan, that's near where. So these spaces, as well as these spaces here, are just gonna be recessed concrete, sand concrete. So the idea behind it is to create parking and create overflow, but also keep it so it's ventilated, please.
I don't see any parking around that, we talked about that, whoa.
So if you drive in and see that one car, it could be fitting several cars.
I don't see, oh, on my plan, I don't see a car.
So, see underneath.
I I see an overhang.
So see under the overhang, if you will, there's like a little like white box, kind of signifying where the car could be.
That's, so the overhang is where you said a a car could park there?
Right, we're, like, just.
Yeah, I mean, it's a seven point three by forty foot over.
Right, we're saying it's all the way down here. So, it it can also be. So we're pointing out with the parking.
Are you gonna show that on another plan?
Well, what we're looking for as far as the parking, we're not looking to use exterior parking to make our unit count. So all the additional parking we're proposing is for the, if there was somebody that was there, if a plumber needs to show up and fix something. He now is allowed to park in the bottom of the building up front, yet it's not for the homeowners who are to be parking in the spots.
You have parking. I get a little confused here, trying to figure out, so the semi base camp, that you're gonna revise. The parking for that extends into this piece of property right here.
No, so the parking for that is the handicap, some handicap spots that we had allocated, but there's still handicap at the bottom side. So, this parking, this is probably gonna float out of the lot line, this lot line exists there.
Right.
And so, what we're doing is changing things up, so the employee parking, what things, like, they're being done there now, as far as this section, won't be there.
So, so this parking that's here, it's shown on the plan, on the lot line, will that be there or not?
Yes, this parking will be there.
For who?
For who, cause it it it's.
Hotel basement, condo basement. Right now, we're looking at it as most likely or probably, like, it could be allocated either, it's not in any, either parking allocation. We're trying to make sure we created in our design enough overflow parking, in the event suddenly shows up and they, they don't do what.
Yeah, so it would be like a mixed area.
Correct, so we, we don't need it for any parking regulation, so all the parking you have. We've made sure that in our design, instead of trying to maximize the unit count and get huge with the parking. As parking's been a hot topic, we wanted to do a proper amount of spots inside the building, get our units called a residential, uh, you know, condo building. Now, as far as the rest of it's concerned, we know going into it, we've got bonus spaces that you could start adding them up and say, wow, you could have gotten another. Eight units in there, six units.
Well, the comment I have Mark would be that, should this. The condo property ever be sold off differently than the semi base camp, should those two ever, or. You're gonna have a hard time.
Those spots won't be allocated to the condo building, so the spots are gonna be bonus to spots, so we're gonna.
But they're on the property of the condo building.
They're.
Partially on it. Yeah.
But that's where we're not.
Go ahead.
Put a, put a, just a crust. Neutral easement, you know, you can use it, I can use it.
I like that, is it? A neutral easement's fine, that'd be great.
Something like that, you know, just just so it's identified, if it ever gets sold, that there is, you know, that's good.
Yeah.
Something so that.
Put that. I just said Jay to make sure you put that in the minutes.
Now, the other thing on this parcel, we have a proposed, you know, indoor, outdoor pool spa building. Um, this will be an amenity building that will be meant for all the new condo owners. Um, in this space, so it's an outdoor, you know, parasing, there's additional ski racks. So, what we're, what our goal is for here is so people can come here, stay here. Um, then they park, and then they walk, and wanna go to dinner, and that, they're over in the heavy line, and get a breakfast, they're gonna be staying in there. Ski in, ski out, walk where they need to.
So, I have a question for you, these twenty eight units, these twenty eight units come off of the existing count?
That's right.
One for one, so, I I can't remember how many you have currently.
We have like, we have, you know, seven hundred and change to go.
Right, so the the twenty, twenty eight will come off of that count.
That's right. Uh, the design of this building, we're keeping it, um, we're keeping it really, we're trying to fit in with what we have existing there, so it's a. Uh, similar style roof to what we're proposing at the nest, similar pitches, it is one floor parking below, so, and then two floors, so if you. Standing at the building, there's a little bit of change, we're trying to eat up some of that with this building below, so there'll be some lockers below the parking garage even level, so. You'll drive in here and have a level of parking, and then two levels of residential above.
The parking above ground guy?
No.
It is, kind of sort of.
It's a split, so what we're doing is actually building on grain and prime, so we're actually, because the parking already is carved into the ground. The ground, we wanna make it so it's, really, when you look at it from a streetscape, you're driving in, it's not, like, we're not pushing the parking below grade. So, we're using up what would have been, like, we debated, looking at this thing, could be. Theory, if we want bigger units, you keep the twenty eight units, and you put the parking low, lower, and then make that whole be a walkout, right?
Mark, have you considered any stormwater requirements for this, because it's gonna disturb enough area that's gonna require?
Yeah.
So, so do you have places for all your stormwater, I mean, you've left enough room for stormwater management?
We have.
I mean, I see you over here where it says lot, lot thirty nine point five five, you get an area there, and then you go underneath. You know, some of the drop offs, you could do some things, but I just wanna make sure you leave enough for that as well.
Yeah, we did, and that, we also pushed the building towards the right side, getting closer to the property, and getting kind of the buffer area in between. And we, we didn't wanna, we tried to kinda tuck it in, and the way we designed the entry into the garage too, was to soften the streetscape. Um, we wanted to look really nice, if you're driving by it, so that way that's carving in, and that's also where we'll have a spot for a dumpster and.
Construction be wood construction or will be?
It'll be a combination, so you're gonna need a lot of like steel and concrete decking, so like that parking structure, or most like, you know, you're gonna end up putting that concrete foundation.
Will be sprinkled?
Yes.
That's all, that's all I needed to do.
So you're doing all that, go ahead, Joe, parking garage, just so everybody has designated parking, pretty much?
So what we're gonna need to do, the only way to continue to maintain enough parking. In a nice manner, is to just bite the bullet and spend money on these projects, because. If we don't do that, you can't get economical parking, like, you can't get a good layout, like, if I say, great, here's this building, there's no parking, they're down over here, here's this, you're just moving this around. We think that, just like a residential home, right, you build a one unit, and you need to get enough parking for that house, um, their driveway, the garage. So by doing it the way we're designing it, you're creating parking where you don't see it, it's a cleaner look.
They won't be all scattered around there.
That's right, and and we can eat up parking throughout, so you start to use our total parking spaces, as you start to really get into the point where it's part of all, you know.
You really see people wanna spend that much money to make something look pretty like that, I think that's.
So.
One thing to be taken consideration, the access ability to the fire effect and the open lattice.
We did, that's one of the reasons why, if you look up at the parking port, so that's pottery goes way up there, and the side of the hill, we now, you can drive. To the side of the building, near that and over to the right, so one of our questions originally to the state fire marshal was access, and what do you do when you're building on the side of, you know, obviously we're inside. All the property, a lot of these are in the side of mountains, um, so we talked about that, and they were very happy with the design that we were proposing.
Cool, go ahead, Joe.
Also, it could be a wooden building, steel building, yeah.
Combination, so what we wanna do is, it'll be like a, just to simplify, right, you're gonna have a concrete foundation, then we'll do a metal deck. That deck will have a concrete slab on top of it, that's gonna create, and then we were debating doing a metal structure with concrete slabs. And then infill all with wood, or switching over to wood, um, the biggest thing that we need to do though, it's because of the nature of the building, sound detonation is incredibly important. Um, you know, you put units like that, you're next to someone's wall, or you're walking on somebody, so there's a lot of methods that are a little bit more costly, but you can. Create it so you don't hear someone walking above you, um, so there'll be, in our design, our floor systems have a little bit over two feet of space. So even though you could get away with a TGI that's twelve inches, you're keeping the air gap, so there's, you know, you drop a bowling ball. And that vibration and that noise is now not transferred all the way through the building.
So, so a lot of questions, a lot of questions I have, Mark, I see utilities and trash, so. How are you gonna get the trash out of there, are you gonna be on dumpster, is it gonna be, and and how does that?
It'll be there, just similar.
People will take their own down to the solid waste facilities, or how they're gonna do that?
Yeah, that, we'll leave that, I would assume that the dumpster will be empty.
But there's no dumpster location here.
Yeah, there is.
I would have left, coming in the driveway straight ahead.
Okay, so then I saw, I didn't see that, all I saw was the trash and the.
Yeah.
Utility building.
Yeah, so that's because we think that there's a good chance that, we're not, we wanna look for what is actually gonna be functional. So we wanna be, if we're gonna need a maintenance personnel to do things, or if there's a trash chute that goes into one area, and then it's moved over.
Joe, what? On the parking lot, what is gonna be the height of the parking lot, because right now, most people are not using, right, when you come back out. Everybody can stop your K, and you can get an SUV or something cheap, or a two-way rack on it. That's almost, but kind of down, it's almost nine and a half feet.
Yeah, so what we're gonna do is an oversized parking garage, but will not. Yeah, so what we're gonna do is an oversized parking garage, but will not accommodate every vehicle, right? Like, if you put a big suburban and then put a huge toolie and you're up to nine and a tenth feet, there's gonna be a fine line between a garage door not really working, right? So what.
Ground parking slot open solely at that spot that night.
Correct. What what happens with that, that, we are making the parking garage designed for all. Vehicles without, if you're adding too much onto it, right? So we're gonna make sure it's an oversized garage based off the SUVs up to date.
But you have to be careful of the primary.
So that's the next question, and we think this is a good project. It depends on how we wanna look at the grading too. So we will, we would recommend to the board that we go in for a height variance. That was always what was intended behind the South Peak projects. We don't need it by, you know, there's ways, it's, it's, it's a calculation, right? The average grade or place in grade, and we have a lot of, there's a lot of, like. It's two stories above a garage, just no, I don't know if you're familiar with, like, my house is at the ski bridge where you drive by, you know, it's the average grade. The average of the back of this is gonna be not much at all.
Well, I think one of the concerns of the elevation. But difference that you're looking at is for fire access, for ladders, for fire trucks. A ladder fire truck, or even the ladders of the fire department, get around back and be able to use the ladder to access the building. Cause the elevators aren't working, I mean, if if all stairways are all fireproof stairways and they they they're standalone. The the concrete block and they they go all the way up, so things like that might go a long way towards maybe, you know, have. Approving of variance, things like that, plus it's sprinkled, so.
Yeah, we we'd like to go for the variance, so why we would like to do that too is, this is a very. Small variance building, right? So we have more to come, and part of our design process is making sure we're prepared for what's happening, right? So knowing what the board's gonna be worried about, what is the state fire marshal gonna be worried about. We wanna do that now opposed to waiting till we have a big building like a Riverwalk style building that might be the middle of the village. Uh, or other buildings that are up here on the opposite side of the parking lot down the road. If there's a larger building there that could be taller than what we're proposing here, cause this is relatively short.
Um, so the variance would, if I'm correct, would come from the zoning.
That's right.
So you would need to go before the zoning board first.
There's another way to do it. I mean, go ahead. At the mountain club, the front side by the road, you have to meet any high appointments to, for the maximum elevation. It's in the mountain club, they filled in the backside, through the mountain, so they'll give the each ladders for the lattice going to the backside. Then they start the pump, it will be covered, the backside going in.
And that was done over here with Dennis too. We did the same thing with Dennis.
So we're not concerned about, we could do that, so we're looking at that as an option.
How much higher than the than the requirement mark do you look at?
Several feet, not several, two feet.
We're about thirty seven feet in that. So you're only. What's it gonna be, thirty?
Thirty five feet. To the primary, on the uphill side.
Right, and that two feet we've eaten up in the floor systems, and so there's ways that I didn't wanna, I think it's a great project for us to get ahead of. So one of the things we're trying to do as a design, you know, development company too, is let's go in for this project. It's not like, geez, what do we do if we, like, we're not asking for a whole floor and. Um, let's go in, go through the zoning board process and.
I mean, I I would think if you're looking at a couple feet, and. What I would do, what I would do is fly it all. What I would do is talk to the fire chief. And see what he says about it. That's, that'll probably go a long way towards. Helping convince the zoning board. If you talk to him and say, look, it's only gonna be two feet, and the grading is gonna be such that, you know. It it's not gonna be that bad in the back, but in front, you'll definitely want it to be, but in back, you won't. So if you do things, try and mitigate some of that, plus fact that it's gonna be sprinkled, and if you have those fireproof stairways, I mean, I I think. It go all the way. We can circle back with him, but he was at tech review this morning, we talked about the variance as well.
So our goal too is, you know, part of the South Peak plan, and we've talked about this for, I told this board this two years ago, and we have more projects coming that aren't just big huge houses. Um, you know, we wanna try to have a little bit of product net, so that you have a smaller units and. This will be the next one.
Um, the ski trail is, that'll have, actually, it does.
Um, so does it matter in this setting, um, because of the approvals, whether or not he exceeds the. Maximum allowable footprint on the lot with the building?
We've, we've already said that.
The dimensions not okay or fine.
Right, we've already said.
I just wanted, I just want us to. Check that box.
They need to, they need to meet the setback requirements, which they have. And they. Other than that, that's pretty much all I get, they're bound, we said that they're bound by the thousand and eighteen units.
No, I know, I know.
That's the only thing I think. And all of our discussions, am I correct? So, other than that, it's, it's, you know, you've got the water and sewer, you've got. Once you meet the requirement, you know, talk to the fire chief and get your, your variance. They just come in for the site plan we're doing, I I think we'd be. Almost anyone else having a seat?
One more thing, hey, make sure you get a litter on your elevator. Fire guys and the ambulance guys, they run into that a lot. You know, phone the shift, oh, they can't get the lady out. If you think about it, well, it's only after varying for twice after this time, all in all.
Yeah, but I also.
And that's probably, you know, like I said, you make that the least amount possible. On the building, if you use your grading to make it so that you're only two feet or. That's part of the building, you know, I mean, I I think you're right, I think you wanna make it so you gain as much height as you can. For what you need, you know, festival consider you doing a parking garage, you know, and and. It it really helps the parking situation, cause you've got that down there.
Yeah, and that's part of having a good parking garage too, with a nice, like, oversized parking garage posted, like, I was just in Boston today, I get it, it's a ride, it's like, I get it, I'm upset.
Oh, yeah.
Such a ducking while you're driving.
Yeah, go to Mass General Park. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just want you, um, to make sure that you look at the, um, variance application, because. You're gonna have to address the question about hardship. Um, and.
I think the hardship.
I think the. I think you should. Look at the safety elements, um, you know, we're talking about adding the additional space between the floors, there's some. Aside from the norms, there's some additional safety.
Fire ratings.
Better fire ratings to have that kind of spacing between the floors. Anyway, I just want you to think about it, because you're gonna have to. So like that application, and they're getting, and they're very strict about going through the criteria, and that's the hardest criteria to be.
I'm aware, and I think that the hardship that we wanna talk about on this project too is the design of the South Peak project. Meaning that topography, so one of the hardships can be topography in sight. So.
And and the uniqueness of the, of the property, so.
Correct, so one of the uniqueness is, this is the thousand and eighteen units was always, just for what it's, we wanna try to set. Part of this is discuss that, because it's not gonna just come up here, it's gonna be coming up, we we have buildings that are gonna be the middle of the village, and we intend to be. Maybe twenty feet higher, ten feet higher than thirty five. So if that is gonna be the way, or it's not, we wanna know now before we start tuning calculations and plans.
Harsh is, harsh, harsh is a tough criteria to meet, but safety is is one of the ways to. Use harsh to be there again.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, the uniqueness of the landscaping around it, if if you take a look at it, that's pretty flat, I mean, it's not really steep. If you take a look.
It goes from a thousand and two to eight eighty.
Well, yeah, you're looking back, I mean, it's. It's flat relevant to a lot of properties in Fifth Valley now. Do you have any more questions for?
I actually have one, you just clarify, cause the assignment is that you were. Implying that variance needs to be in our hands before we come to the board.
It's probably better for you to do it that way, you don't have to, we can make it, we can make it, uh, a little conditional upon a variance. But if you have your variance, I mean, the. It would be better, because you you would know that.
Is the design for variance, they're gonna want exact measurements for that variance, I would imagine. And before we finalize the exact details of the architectural design, I'd like to come to the planning board, it's gonna have a lot more. Opinion or a lot more s- say over what the overall look and feel, in my thought, the variance is more of the height. Um, maybe I'm wrong in that thought, but, uh, if we're doing them somewhat in conjunction, if if there was a reason that we wanted to change it, so. In theory, someone says, we'd like you to have more of space in the garage, that it needs to go higher, or.
You can do whatever you want, I I I'm just saying, i- if you, if you get it first, it makes it easier for you, I think.
Yeah.
For me, on both boards, it's, it would be easier to go to get a variance, I think, cause they need. I mean, you could almost bring a set of plans like this, so the zoning board can get.
Cause I've been looking at the variances a little, and I just, there's some criteria in there for hardship. You can't impact, uh, property values for neighboring property, you can't impact views further, and I don't know whose house potentially. It's across from.
There are, but those, but those criteria are, are interpreted by the zoning board.
Right, um, but it, like, he just mentioned like a twenty foot or ten foot in town.
Well, yeah, but that, that's on other projects, not on this.
Right, I'm just saying that, from a variance, there's more than just hardship.
Yeah, there's five criteria.
You're gonna go down each one.
Clutters need to be number five.
Do you have a, do you have a copy of the variance criteria? Is anyone else on board that have any more questions? Comments? Does he want these plans back?
Uh, I want, I need a set, cause they have to go the minutes, um, and the files, so. Thanks, yes, so you could just keep them here.
Uh, would you like us to circle back, is, can we just, wouldn't it be appropriate for me to just schedule times, you can have it, and talk about our three plans, you'll figure it out now.
I think. I think when you have a project.
I don't have a lot of problems.
Under, under the Southwood, we've even, if you've got the help of, you know, the Southwood, we'll do it, if you go one with the projects, then we.
Carol, there are two conversations going on, we can understand none.
Clear this up to the staff, or they will say, no, we want you to come back here.
Okay, so are you?
My, my thought is, and, uh, I don't know, is you back to the real, have you, please? Um, as we mentioned before, we wanted, uh, I don't know how appropriate this is, but I think it should be, but. Um, say, for example, uh, markets is state permits, you know, by month, everything good. Should we have a copy of that in a folder for all this stuff, make sure that in the future, anything that maybe. Even outside obstacles that we just found us, but that was just, well, we get all of this, okay. Copy, document everything, so we have them all.
So everything we're doing, everything we're doing will have, like, we're gonna be doubling up and down. But yeah.
Just turn it on.
Yeah, so we're gonna keep, we have copies of everything, and we're trying to share everything, so whenever Carol needs things, or John or Sean needs things. We'll be able to just kind of make sure we're duplicating everything, so we'll have a record, you'll have records, and then we're we're doing digital sets as well, so that way if there are questions. We can kind of go back and have, have a. Alright, thanks.
Alright.
I think five man versus.
They go better than the situation. That's fun, yeah, I think I'm a little throw.
They move along like a situation.
Yeah, we should make a sign out of that. We're gonna have a situation for that. I can't believe the stuff that pops up sometimes, oh, it's crazy. We used, we used to, we used to, uh, get together one weekend evening. We talked about the craziest excuse we heard from somebody who might fill up a work. One kid told me I had to get a new pair of sneakers. I missed the whole day of work.
Look at the posts of the white feed.
Oh, that's crazy, man. Most of the guys are making situations.
Yeah, exactly.
Really?
Oh, you just definitely right on that.
You get a, and the younger, you can hear from, oh, because there's a boss there. Tell you the radio, you ever on the bridge, you gotta leave, you leave, you're shutting the whole bridge down. We shut down for two weeks, we call Boston. You know, you know, you had to get it done, put it back up, who's gonna pay it for the two weeks of work? They had to. We were legal with that up, but we did it and realized. Well, I like the way Mark's thinking now. Just say it, Mark. You know, I, I, in a sense, I I do feel bad for, because I know we're just don't, that the existing place is now would never set up. And although my ear is pain on that. But, right, but I also. Even if it's a few weeks that it's not. Just means that it's not actually potentially more in the time.
That's well.
Right, and so with him now, he's made it up for parking to be. But here.
Yeah.
We got issues.
Well, he knows, he's got something about it.
Yeah.
It's like, what is it gonna be?
I still go, I'm I'm thinking satellite garages, like, out of town, we just get shut over there or something. Yeah, that would be, oh, what they do is like, like, one of those gondola guys, zip right through it, they just keep. Every ten minutes, there comes another. I think that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna put parking garages so. Oh, we're still not going there.
Uh, Steve.
They're gonna be a few minutes, stay with us, suspended.
We take that.
Alright, so we'll call it back to work. Move on to administrative review, site plan review regulation checklist.
Okay, so you don't, I don't think I put this in here. Well, I didn't put the checklist in here, I I totally spaced it out, I've already done the checklist. Um but then Jade was gonna try to put it in a fillable form. And I didn't realize that she had done a fillable form to stick on the her website already. So but now we have to have Becky help us.
So the checklist changes was was to include.
The looping.
The looping and and the water regulations.
Selectmen are gonna do the water uh regulations.
Right, but it was supposed to be on the checklist that they have.
Oh, it's on there. It's on there, but they have to ask for the waiver.
Right, but when when they come to the planning board, and where could we go down through the checklist? One of the items on that checklist should be about looping, but it also should be that they they have met the requirements. Of the town of Lincoln's water and sewer regulation, because when they brought the comment in about the hydrants. We need them to be able to check off that they they've read those and and. That they're at least putting the right hydrants.
Um I I think Sean talked to, just so you know, Sean did talk to. Scott Maselli this today, right?
Yeah, we've talked.
That was placing those are don't fit.
Start the loop, Dave?
I'll bring it out at the next meeting, I'm just.
Okay.
I'm just gonna stick.
I just wanna make sure that those that that.
I think I did, but I have to check, I have to.
Yeah, there will be no substitutes to the town standard. Or heights, ones that have been substituted in certain places will be replaced with town standards.
Good, so is that gonna be everywhere?
It's gonna be up in Cedar Circle, uh fireside loop. Going forward, put a mountain extension, I'll find whatever that's called, Equinox coming up for the expansion down there.
Well.
Those are ones I'm dealing with right now. If there's more, you can take a look at.
Well, I guess I have. I think it's great that they wanna change them, but there's probably other developments had the same problem in them. If we're gonna make one development do it, then we should make all the developments do it or.
I don't think they have a problem with the other develops.
Well, I don't know, I'm just saying. Or how about the landing, how about?
This is the only one Nate's complaining about, so.
Going forward is one thing, but making a change in my.
I I believe the reviews that Ray does. And his verbiage, I think it says the specific hydrant. I'm not sure if the verbiage says no substitutions, that may be the sticking point. So we we need to look at that and make sure it says no substitutions, period.
Well, that's what we wanted, what we wanted on our checklist, what I wanted on checklist was, I wanted like, it says. They've met all the requirements of the town of Lincoln's water and sewer regulations. Because in their water regulations, it defines, I mean, the water regulations is pretty thick, it defines what they use for hydrants. For valves, for all of that stuff, so. That way there, they will check it off, as like, you know, they'll assign saying, yes, we agreed, we've met those regulations. And then when they don't, we can give them the checklist and say, this is what you guys said you you met, we did, so. Like, that's what we wanted on checklist, and the same thing with the the looping. And the town was gonna do some stuff.
Yeah, I can update on that, the uh water selectmen discussed this at our meeting two nights ago. Yeah, and um. We're gonna have that in that same like looping language inserted into the water regulations. That we uh previously approved, and then once we get that new version back, we will approve it with that language.
So it'll be in all all the regulations.
It would be, I I think it'd be worth someone checking out. You know, going to like, I think the two like ongoing is projects, uh Forest Ridge.
Right.
I mean, besides. Would be would be um Forest Ridge.
Forest Ridge, uh the pines up there, whatever that is.
Yeah, up up there. And um. I I don't know if there's any new hydrants related to any of the commercial buildings.
On Route Three, I think they can do some things, so that should be followed by on Route Three. When they get going with.
Well, yeah, the town project should be definitely.
Oh, the town project, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But in those regulations, Carol, you should, even though it doesn't say it in full sets at the very end, no substitutions, period. Okay, that just re clarifies or reiterates.
Yeah, I mean, just. Put some regulation in, okay, so and actually, can you bring us a a copy of that, please? So let's see. Discussion on a traffic study for a traffic turnaround. On the traffic turning off and on to Paula Road and on Forest Ridge Drive. Uh from onto New Hampshire Route one twelve Main Street, came on sideways per request by the M G D O T. Uh we have something, we had something in there from the North Country Council. Uh who said that they would. Be happy to do it, um Carol's talking to them.
Yeah, I set up a meeting with the TRT cuz I thought I was just telling them what we needed to have done. And you said you wanted them to come in.
Yes.
So um so I didn't know whether they were allowed to come in because of. Um they also received a fair amount of federal funding and state funding as well as funding from us, so. I didn't know whether they'd be able to come to a meeting, and they said they would.
They would.
So if you have something for them, but you want them to prepare, you should tell me now. So that when they show up, they're prepared, they asked me, you know, what do you want us to bring, or what do you want us to?
I think what I'd like them to bring is just itself. Me, because their comment was, okay, so for example, in there, did you see their?
I don't think so, I think I just.
It said that the. That they wanna do a traffic count, uh. As I think doing it at four locations would be free of charge of regular traffic, don't work under a championship contract. Technical assessment turn ways may be beyond our expertise, but we can at least assist with beginning stages. They were talking about doing it. That comes in April, and my thing was. April, April would be a good baseline, and that's why I wanted to commit, because April would be a good baseline. But I think when you and I were talking, we were talking about doing it during Columbus weekend, when everything's backed up.
Well, you're saying both things.
Right, so they get a baseline.
They have done um lots of traffic counts for us over the years, you know, different places and. They're very accommodating, they're, you know, as long as it's not, you know, using up all the tubes at the same time for some other community or something.
So you get, can you set up, set them up on the one? And in general, time it works for them.
Well, it works for them, but they just wanted to know what you wanted them to bring.
Yes, them, cuz I think we're gonna be asking them the questions. First of all, I I I wanna know if they, how how they do it, do they do a baseline, is that a good idea? Is it, do I do a baseline and do it during Columbus Day, or do they recommend, you know, and. They they should probably come do, if if they've got during a day, if they're around during a day, it wouldn't hurt them to go take a look at the. The area that we're talking about, so they know during a day, they will, you know, be able to see it. And when we start asking questions, and they'll at least be familiar enough with the site. Unless they get it on Google Earth or something, I suppose they could do that.
Well, I I mean, I send them pictures, you know, maps and.
I mean, if they have Google Earth, and they could, I just thought if they want to come down and. But that, they're looking for conceptual.
You know, that that's what they look for, it's like. What exactly can you do for us, and how you're gonna do it?
Yeah, I think with their experience, they can give us the best.
Right.
Let them guide us.
We've got the problem, how how do you guys propagate the solution?
Well, and 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 we don't even know if it's a problem, that's why we wanna have this traffic study done, so. I mean, it it may not be, they may say, hey, look, everything here looks good, but. I want to do it for that reason, alright. Move on to discussion with the master plan review and update.
Okay, so the.
Carol gave us all a copy of the master plan.
Don't lose them, I don't have any more. So do not lose them, bring them back.
So I have a question.
It was a big deal for me to make, to get copies made to them of of these. So that's why, you know, go ahead, take them home or whatever, and look at them, but.
So several ways, there's several ways to look at updating this. One way is to hire somebody to do it and 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 walk us. Through what we need to do. Um or when I was talking to uh past chairman Jimmy, he said that the last time they did it. He said that you went through it chapter by chapter and just kind of updated it yourself. Um it really is all. I mean, when you look at it, it really is only a guide and two two-way vision, but. My comment would be, if North Country Council does anything as far as master plan assistance to communities. Maybe we could talk to them at the same time, and we'll talk to them about that traffic, so or it's two different. Parts of their company, you know, I I don't know.
Well, it depends on who they have on staff, cuz I used to work there. So sometimes they have people on staff who can do a great job. And some people, times they don't, because not that many people wanna live up here.
Well, I think we're gonna wanna have input, I think we're gonna wanna have public meetings about this and. And try and get public input on it, because there's been a lot of changes within the town, so I mean, I think we're gonna.
It's a lot of work, even though we hired somebody, it was a lot of work for me, it was a lot of work. Cuz, you know, I I did the surveys, I mean, she did the doctor surveys, I did the surveys. Handed them out, made the box, collected them, I mean, tallied them, you know, it was a lot of.
Well, let me ask Ford, cuz we're we're the one, we're thoughtful for preparing this. How detailed do you think you want it to be? Do you want it to reflect what town's gone through and what it's gonna go through? I mean, do you wanna have public meetings and and try and get all of that in there too? That's kind of, to me, that's that that's the first step, is to try and figure out, you know, how detailed do you want it to be? Because in the end, the end result is, things change so fast, this master plan probably will be updated by, I think it is up. You know, I mean, it it's. The demographics change all the time, the the land. Change is the uses of the land, what we're, what applicants are doing with it, I mean, so realistically. What are you supposed to do with it? I'm doing, I don't know, you get some comments.
Sure, I always have comments. I was part of this producing that. And just a few of my comments is is. We hired someone to do it, and it was. I don't wanna say overwhelming, but it was a struggle for the planning board to get through. Chapter by chapter, and and get enough information to the person that hired, again, the person we hired guided us. But she doesn't just go off and write it on her own, she gets input through surveys, through through things, you know, meetings with townspeople. Uh and then especially through the planning. So we would go through each chapter, and it was a struggle, it was a lot of time and and trying to schedule it between. Other regular applications, it was a long process, um and to be honest. I've not looked at this since twenty sixteen.
Uh just to say, Jimmy, I brought it up every year, and he never wanted to review it. We were supposed to review the chart in the back of the master plan every year. And make sort of adjustments and. Um you know, if nothing else, keep track of what kind of things we wanted to focus on for the next master plan. Changes to be made, but then. You really wanna do it, so.
But I guess, so how how's the rest of the board feel, what what do you think about the master? Joe, you've been on here a long time, what do you think?
Well, there's nothing you really wanna spend on.
But do you think it should be?
A lot of this stuff, other chapters, and then change, like, a lot of it should be gone over, yeah.
I'm I'm concerned that if if we don't make it reflective of what actually has happened in Lincoln, cuz a lot has happened. And. Where we at, twenty twenty-six, so we got ten years.
Ten years.
So a lot has happened in Lincoln in ten years, so if we don't make it reflective of at least the changes. That have happened, and then where Lincoln should go, I mean, we could. Five hundred, I I thought it was four four hundred acres over here, or three hundred acres, but someone told me that it's five hundred acres.
I don't know what you're talking about, because I went online, I looked at our tax maps. South Peak owns all the way down to the property boundary line with um Woodstock, Woodstock. So and if there's no, there's no loom property at all, it's just South Peak. So I don't know what they're talking about.
The housing property goes all the way down there, but.
That belongs to South Peak.
But Carol, what they're looking, what they're looking at doing is using Forest Service property, doing a whole nother E I S. And acquiring property that way, that's my understanding. So they won't be on the private property, maybe some, maybe Burgosia will give some of that property for like the same way he's doing here. That they're they're actually talking about, they're gonna go through the process, the N E P A process with the Forest Service to do this. That's my understanding.
Okay, so. Okay, so you're talking about developing, I just, right before I came in here.
So why don't you tell us what it is?
Looked to me like they were trying to expand the trails and everything in more forest land. But still, the development would all happen on South Peak land. I mean, you know, buildings and all that kind of stuff.
Well. That's correct, the the ski area will primarily be on water plant. But just like. Um Timber Town and then the uh Can Core, um the penny. Lincoln, Lincoln Express. Um just like those two lifts, they come down onto uh South Peak land. Um so that will continue. As as they go go west, um the, you know, primarily will be Forest Service land that has all the ski trails on. Which right, as they get down towards the bottom, they will, and I don't know what the, with the development agreement, I mean, the um. Whatever, the agreement between South Peak and Looney and the Thunder, I don't have. Figure to that, but um I know that there's there's. Cross easements, but not only parking, but but ski lifts, but. Big skyaches and stuff like that.
Oh, did they talk about access, were they gonna create any new access itself, like the interstate? Where I was talking before about coming down the back, or they're still planning on using access, ground access.
There was no no talk about it to access.
So the plot, so it was five hundred acres of new new trails and lifts?
Something like that, yeah.
So five hundred acres of good feels, it's gotta be some more parking somewhere. And the access to that could, I mean, if I'm thinking about the master plan, the access to that could. Could force the state to maybe take all the parking off the the road. But when we're talking about our master plan, this is things that that the town should be, the planning board should be looking at to either try and say. We agree, don't agree, this is why, you know, I mean, it it's gonna affect business owners on Main Street.
So my thought with the master plan is that number one, we should hire some.
Okay.
Um because this this group can't do this on our own.
No, look at this, just demographics, it's one page, take somebody, they know.
Uh just research, right, now, I mean. I'm gonna need to hire someone to do that.
The demographics are grids, but is is there a lot of the, is there a lot of the, just the written stuff that can stay the same? And we're only looking at changing the demographics and stuff, that has like, I don't know.
The written stuff in here came about through substantial discussion. Of, you know, a question, a lot was questioning from our work advisor consultant, or whatever she was. And 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 then the board, you know, giving answers, and and even amongst the board, there were. Like everything we do, there's.
I mean, if you look at this, I I just opened it up to this natural and cultural resources. That section is all. I'm just calling oil play stuff, but it's it's.
And and some of that, oh, gee. You know, maybe we should have this discussion after each one of us goes home. Goes through this and puts a a highlight next to paragraphs that you know need to be updated and changed. You know, uh, more detailed or whatever, come back and see how much total highlights. By the.
That that would be, is a million of it will work for you.
Well, it's. Gonna be a lot of work just going through and and reading it and and highlighting things that you wanna change.
We have money in C I P. To work on the updating master plan. So, I mean, the the money is there to be used for that, so. You know, there's no sense of beating ourselves up truly above all of it, if we can. Have somebody professionally help us out do it.
When, when we're saying this, what are we looking for a person to collect data?
Well, it's more than much more than that.
They they collect data, they they organize meetings with the general public, they they put it all together, they give you demographics. So they, you know, they, they're used to doing the master.
Oh, okay.
People, people make master plans are.
Just by themselves, they're.
They, yeah, they're they're sure, they're.
Yeah.
They're all by their own, because it takes a lot to do it.
Yeah.
And 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 if we try and do it, as OJ said. We're gonna be into a lot of work sessions. As well as regular sessions.
Well, even if you hire somebody, you still will.
Well, yeah, but but they'll do a lot of the 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 legwork and the and and the prep work and then when they come back, we'll still have a lot of it ready or they'll be ready to ask us questions about. Where do you think this should go or? If you need. If they think we may need a public caring about something, whether it's parking or, you know. Drive or employee housing or housing, you know, because of housing section, so. They may be able to incorporate some of that with what whatever's happening, depending upon what happens with campers world, you know, I mean, so some of that, some of that can happen, I mean, there could be things that say. You know, if if they're gonna do five hundred acres over, maybe, maybe they say that. They would recommend that. Uh, the development do its own. Have property for its own housing also. For its own employee, there there may be other recommendations like that, I mean, I thought about that last night, I mean. We should be. Talking to developers who are developing large tracts of land and having them. Lots of stuff, the money in their pocket that they get from developing that land. Helping. Helping uh, supply housing for for workers, you know. They use their experience of their property to sell some. For now, sitting there, I'll hit me, beat up because they don't have an house, that's not fair. Anyway, so. So. I think OJ has a good point, why don't we, why don't everybody go through it? And see what you think needs to be changed. I like what you think needs to be changed, see demographic and. Change or discuss. So ju- just do that, don't worry about the things that you don't think, ju- ju- just do the things that you think to be updated or discussed. And just highlight, a little check mark line, and then we can, we'll we'll have another meeting or session, we'll 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 look at, bring them all back in, we'll just go by page by page and see what everybody thinks. And then we can develop a list. That can go off to whoever we hire. Um, to to do this. Carol, can you, can you see? If you can. Find contractors, get get us a list of contractors who will, who do master plan updates so that we can.
We have one, no, pretty comfortable.
Well, Carol just said that she wasn't sure, it depends on their health situation. So can you see if you can find at least. A couple so we can talk to them about or. Or. Yeah. I, by the time. Those two boys in game offer that as a service, they do.
Do they?
They do work some of that, I I I be something, I saw something, Sarah.
She's a, she's pretty much a one man show, so you have to see if she's.
Who's Sarah?
Yeah.
She's not a one, she's not a, I know.
She talked about, she's got one person that she's training.
But that, but that's in there, that that one office, they have more offices than. And we just received their, all right, and Jimmy did, he said something. Their uh, contract, so I'll be forwarding that to everybody and. Uh. So we did that sign, did it go on, yeah. See if we, see if we can develop a couple of people, Carol, whether it's the boys and King. Any of the others that, and and sure enough, that said, that may have that experience. Must be planning up its down south that has experience doing. Master plan.
Well, the last estimate that I got was from, you know, a firm that's, that's with, for planners. Um, and they do that sort of thing. But that's the cost that you didn't like.
We got it right here.
The cost. It's more than we budgeted. Because we decided that we weren't gonna budget that much for the C I P, I mean.
It's also was Karen Fitzgerald, though.
Yeah, she's a landscape architect, it's not something that she normally did, she was helping out her friend who was a planner who died. Um, you remember. Okay. What was the number? I can't remember, it's in the C I P. Um, my est- my estimate was uh, maybe seventy five thousand, something like that. To do the master plan? Right. And you're saying that that's not enough? No, this, no, you cut it back to fifty or something. Are you saying that's not enough? Right. So it needs to be seventy five? Well, that's the estimate that I got from them, um.
Right, that's not saying.
Got an updated estimate um, for the last C I B.
That's right.
But we didn't go with it.
Oh.
But I don't know.
You know, we. Just picking a pattern, I thought that.
He was.
Save the town thirty forty thousand.
Yeah, he was the other planner, there were two planners that rescued the guy who was dying, we didn't know he was dying at the time. Karen was one, that was a landscape architect that he had worked with in the past. And the other one is this guy who has the firm that I called, about the estimate.
Well, can you say if you can get us a couple of people that might be willing to give us an estimate? And come in and talk to us, because. I I think that. What OJ is saying is correct, what Joe's saying is al- also correct. They'll give us, we can say, how much is, do we really need to recreate and how much of this? You know, can you guys help us with as part of the statistics and the graphs and rest of that? So everyone agree with that?
Yeah.
I'll be done.
Yeah, and I mean, every town in the state that has zoning has to have a master plan.
Right.
So it's to be updated, there's. I guarantee you this will be the one person in the state doing that work. I mean, I know all of the towns don't have zones. But there's gotta be a hundred that do. Well, a lot of them, the, you know, we have a planner, a staff planner who does. Yeah. That they lead the whole process? That's what I understand. I don't know. And and you know that the in staff. They have an in-house staff, staff, you know, works on. Right, okay, they might have multiple people. There's still gotta be plenty like us that that. So, yeah, don't, don't do it in-house. So. You know, I hope that, you know, I think you could find half a dozen people, maybe they don't know how time, maybe they're out of a price range, but there's gotta be multiple people in the state that.
Well, it depends on where they are and and their. Requirement to get ready, we've missed ours.
I know a couple of contact and tonight, if they want to enter it or not.
Well, don't wake them up late here.
Actually, so it's. If we could run them through Carol.
Definitely the better way to do it.
That that way one person stored, if you wanna get further. Yeah, 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 yeah. That would be fine, I think that's, we should keep it with our own contact first. All right. Public participation, do you have anything?
You're welcome.
In their public, go ahead.
We have the uh, the business park, the two lots that we wanna do a voluntary lot merger. Um, and. Originally, we were gonna bring it up under under business, um, Gray wanted to ask me if you could do that. Uh, but I thought that.
Yes.
Something else should happen, so. Uh, so maybe you should have that discussion, so we know what the next step is, you know, do we just need? Because the applicant is gonna be the town, um, the town still owns those two lots. Uh, so I, anyway, so if you could talk to.
Yeah, I just put on the agenda because I I figured it would be too, too late. It's quarter nine, so.
Well, should I bring it, the application for the for the next meeting?
Yes. I like to think that we could. Get out of here at a reasonable time most nights. This is perfect.
Yeah. Carol, with the application, can you print out a copy of R S A six seventy four colon thirty nine A? Does the reasons for. Six seventy seven? Six seven four. Thirty nine A. Okay.
It's the reasons for what?
The the, um. Reasons why for for planning board to even be able to not prove a voluntary lot merger. Um, is only if it's, it it would create a violation of then current ordinances or regulations.
Right.
So other than that, it it's. You know, we could all think it's a terrible idea. But we approve it. Not that we would think it's a terrible idea, but I'm saying that that's, that's, that's the.
Let's discuss that the next play.
But let's have the, I'm asking for the language to.
That's fine, yeah. I I agree, that's fine. All right.
All right, what's it doing, Carol?
Hold on, wait a second.
Second.
Sorry, being second, all the favors?
Yeah.
I, any opposed? Okay.